That all called to order, the meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, April the 2nd. Are looking to the agenda, are there additions, changes to the agenda? None? In that case, I'll move the agenda be approved as provided. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried unanimously. We have a delegation. Ms. Bogdine, the podium is yours. Ten minutes.
Okay, so, thank you first off for having me on the delegation today. I am here to tell you a little bit about something new and something exciting for Canmore. The Canadian Rockies Mountain Bike Fest. So in terms of what I'm gonna go over, it'll just be a bit of background, some introduction to the festival itself, how municipalities and festivals tend to work together, and then if there's any questions that I can answer. So in terms of a quick overview for anybody who I haven't had the chance to meet yet, my name is Wanda Bogdine, and I'm the conceptualizer, operator, and owner of the Canadian Rockies Mountain Bike Fest. A couple of very quick things-
Excuse me, sorry, sir?
Oh, sir?
If you want to take photographs, you just have to get permission.
Okay.
Generally ahead of the time, but we can put it to a vote of the Committee of the Whole.
Okay.
On that question, to allow these gentlemen to take photographs, those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. We just, it's been a longstanding policy, there is, the meeting's videotaped or livestreamed, and you can certainly capture some of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of a couple of quick pieces of background, in terms of who I am, if you haven't had the chance to work with me before, I'm a devoted Canmoreite, an entrepreneur, a communications and marketing professional of 15 years, a collaborator by nature, and as I began, my profession actually working for charities and nonprofits. I'm a bit of a habitual community builder as well. I also spend a lot of time enjoying the outdoors on a mountain bike and in other modes of transport, usually by foot. I'm also really excited to introduce to you something that's to come. So... In terms of looking at the-
Secretary Buckson at a younger age?
In terms of looking at the market overview for mountain bike tourism, I just, in terms of looking at the market overview for mountain bike tourism, I just wanted to give a little bit of background. In terms of where the marketplace is at right now, mountain bike tourism is exploding. They are a coveted tourism segment that is heavily targeted by Destination B.C. and many destinations around the world. They're affluent, they like to travel, they have money, they behave themselves when they visit, and are primarily between the ages of 35 and 55. Thirty-five percent travel as a family. For context, the mountain bike tourist that I'm identifying isn't particularly what you might see coming in from Calgary. These are very intentional, longer haul visitors that come and usually get a little bit obsessed with areas, and they come back again and again and again throughout the course of a year, up to four times as a standard visitation. Six hundred and seventy-five kilometers is the minimum that they'll drive even for a weekend, so these are longer haul tourists. Pinkbike is a world-renowned source for mountain bike news and conducts studies each year around the economic impacts for mountain bike tourism. The 2014 study research found that the mountain bike visitors returned often and spent significant sums, so the fact that they're here is one thing, but they also spend while they're here. And apparently, mountain biking is the new golf in terms of their recreational spend equivalent. So they're not, you know, they don't like to self-perceive as being consumptive, but you have to watch these people because they often have between three and five bikes. They spend heaps on food, they love wellness activities and cultural activities. They're a bit of a hybrid tourist, so they're not actually just only there to mountain bike. They do expand the spend in other areas. So in terms of looking at who's investing what, where, and when, right now, you can see major expansions going on across North America. Last week, Whistler just announced a substantial investment in their community. This is through the Black Home Resort, but it's important to remember that that relationship, when they were originally starting out, actually was formative with the municipality, with the tourism, and also specific independent agencies. And they all banded together to bring these pieces to the table. So while conducting the feasibility study over the last year, I learned that in Canmore, nearly 100% of mountain bike events are races. Interestingly, the study showed that there is a decline in attendance of races, particularly with certain formats around Canada Cups, 24-hour events, and you can see that there used to be 24-hour offerings across North America, now that's actually minimized down to about 5% of the original market share. Festivals, however, are stable and growing, especially when tailored to the interests of the market and done well. Within that study, a number of gaps were also identified. There are no signature meeting events for the Alberta region. There are no non-race-oriented inclusive events in Alberta. There are a ton of things done with events all over the world that are being done outside of our region, but right now, you could say that we're missing out. There's no strategic approach to mountain bike tourism as well in our province like there is in B.C. They've been investing for about eight or nine years heavily, and they're actually seeing the fruits of their labors come in. But that is also where the opportunity is for us. So looking at the opportunity side of things, considering the gaps, the ingredients for a robust recipe emerged, and then I started to look at the different pieces beyond economic impact, and the fact that festivals had strength in the marketplace. The market was growing. There are major benefits. 2006 saw the first of, and now in 2016, they're doing the next version of it, a significant economic impact study for the Cedar Sky Corridor, that saw $9.3 million in new economic activity that included 194 jobs was generated for the area, and that's just over $6.3 million in wages and salaries. So it's important to note that since that time, 10 years ago, things are expanding, and last year, Whistler announced that their summer product offering has now surpassed their winter. So you can imagine what the 2016 results will look like. It'll be very interesting to get a copy of those. So now going into the festival itself, in terms of how the actual organization is gonna be structured, it is modeled on a social enterprise. That means that it's part business and it's part nonprofit and goes back to the community. So, when you're looking at it, it's probably a little bit of a new flavor. This is being done across North America and the world. However, you don't typically see too many of them emerge because it's usually, it's a newer concept. So the actual festival is all based on research, because I'm a bit of a research geek, and what better way to close gaps and seize opportunities than to do it based on concerted information? Let's bring all of these individuals to the table for an inclusive, fun mountain biking festival that will bring visitors who are like-minded and fit our resident mix, and then help build the community across the region while giving locals a reason to be proud of the trails we have, their culture, and all the efforts that they do to actually support the activities going on in our area. And this is also a significant leadership opportunity for Canmore, in particular, when you're looking at the different region and all the gaps around right now. So the concept was also recently validated with a second-place win at the 2016 Entrepreneurship Challenge that was led by Travel Alberta's Growing Rural Tourism Initiative. So that was kind of exciting. With regards to the actual regional approach, Canmore will be the host area, and it will invite and bring in all the different destinations such as Hinton, Jasper, Calgary as a gateway, Edmonton as a gateway, who knew they have the largest single-trat network in North America? People don't know this because we've not put ourselves on the map yet. There's a lot of opportunity, but in terms of the virtues, one of the core things that's gonna lead us through is collaboration, inclusion, quality. The audience expects it, our partners expect it, and I expect it. There will be phased growth, and of course, the social entrepreneurial reinvestment through Ride the Rockies Regional Trails Fund. This is where I can give back to the trails across the whole area. In terms of supporting partners, a number have already come on board and joined up, and just a warm thanks to the partners who came in today to support the information coming forward to you so that you're in the loop. There are a number of opportunities ahead with regards to our destination marketing organizations as well. We very rarely have seen them work together. Right now, I'm hoping to break some of those barriers down and bring more than one, hopefully up to five, together at the table to work as a joint region. This will be groundbreaking for us. Andrew Nickerson's in the middle of Uncorked right now, so he's a little bit swimming in the details, but he did email and ask if this could be provided to council on his behalf. He'd like to say that Canmore Business and Tourism has been a proud supporter of the proposed mountain bike concept since its inception, or mountain bike festival concept since its inception. We recognize a strong alignment with the mountain sports pillar of Canmore's tourism brand, and we recognize that the proposed timing of the festival is perfect, outside of Canmore's busiest months, but at an appropriate time to stimulate bike traffic for the season. We're also extremely excited about the opportunity for the festival to drive regional collaboration. CBT offers its thanks and plaudits to Wanda Bogdine for driving this initiative. So in terms of what the actual festival will look like, it's gonna be really fun. There will be a number of moving components, everything from jump jams to bike rodeos, kids' activities. It's gonna be a very fun format. I will be partnering with some existing races, but I have no intention or interest in creating anything new on a race format. The races I partner with are non-sanctioned, they're non-UCI, they're non-ABA, they are for anybody to come and participate. This is what's missing for us right now. So why would we want to do this here in Canmore? There's no question that festivals of the right nature build community, and they also motivate residents to sometimes not move. I'm seeing a lot of my colleagues and friends leave into, unfortunately, mostly B.C. right now. I don't think that this is the end-all-to-be-all, and I'm not gonna ever imagine that the festival can retain them here, but I think that if we start to celebrate the culture of a really core component of our community, that they can feel appreciated, included, and I think that it will actually, it'll end really well to us. And then, of course, there's the chance for us to be leaders in Canmore. We're a leader in a number of different areas, and this is something where there's a gap. It's a great place for us to step up. And it fits because this is part of who we are authentically. The festival will have a phased-growth approach. This year, I'm gonna be conducting a, with some partners, fundraiser jump jam. This will build on the legacy that the town of Canmore instigated and started on their own accord, and taking those pieces on on behalf of parks and engineering and a number of the different departments, I'll move that in to transition it towards the actual Canadian Rockies Mountain Bike Festival. But we'll use this year as an opportunity to generate some funds, because I can tell you, this is not going to be an inexpensive undertaking. So I'm looking to generate as much revenue as possible for next year, so it can be phenomenal. So this year will be the launch in terms of the concept, but not the festival, through a jump jam fundraiser. Next year, the end of June, we will actually officially launch the fest. From there, it will be an annual festival, and it will be grown and scaled according to the market's interests, according to what the, you know, the capacity is within the organization. But all indicators are is that it would be a slow-growth phase, and that there would unlikely be any decline, especially with what we're seeing around us. In terms of where municipalities fit in, just a really quick piece of background, and you may all be even more familiar with this than I am, but since I saw so much of this come about in the feasibility study, I certainly wanted to make sure that it was in the public sphere. Municipalities take on different roles when it comes to festivals. We know that the town of Canmore, they sparked something with the Bike Canmore movement, the program. There's a number of things that the town of Canmore has initiated, and I think that is just fantastic. As the town didn't really have an intention on owning those pieces per se, that's where the transition started last year, and moving it on to a different partner to bridge those existing elements into something else. So you might be asking why I'm bringing this to you. It's because there are a number of things that we can keep on our radar in the next 14 months as things build out. I would prefer that you get information from myself, and we've got great media partners, but there could be questions that come up when you see a media story. I'd like you to have the context and the face to the name, and to feel free that you can reach out with any questions as they arise. One interesting example that I did come across was Hinton. There were a number very similar to this, a lot of them down in the U.S., but there's a really wonderful relationship that Bike Hinton has with the municipality, and they were a lead sponsor and have been in terms of support in a variety of capacities. So just for context, because there are some larger festivals, of course, I'll make mention of, it's not that we need to be very big, it's just that we want to be very good. Of course, not too sure if you're familiar, but the flagship event across the world is Crankworks when it comes down to mountain bike festivals. One of the original four partners for the Global Megafest was the town of Whistler, and they still have a supporting role, even though now the operation is wholly owned by Whistler Black Home, the resort. However, in Rotorua, it was really interesting to find out and to speak with the deputy mayor for the Rotorua Lakes Council, that they actually own and have purchased the rights for Crankworks in Rotorua, because they have such a strong belief in the economic opportunities and the cultural and community opportunities involved that fit their area. By the way, Dave has very graciously said that if there are ever any questions about mountain biking festivals in general, that he would be more than happy to connect with any counselors in Canmore. Absolutely lovely man. So, when looking at the vision for the town, there are a number of alignments. There's a lot of ways that I hope that the festival can support the strategic plan, especially when it comes down to strengthening our sense of place, our economic opportunities. I think as part of our affordable housing situation, if you actually have income coming in, that of course can support people being able to stay here and to, you know, accommodate the expenses, enhancing the reasons for passionate residents to stay and to not leave, and being an inclusive community builder. In terms of where the citizens are at and our residents, it's very, very clear that Canmore residents are fanatical about their recreational facilities, programs, and outdoor experiences. I think the town's really done a lot of work in the last year and a half, particularly with the Open Space and Trails Plan and the recreational master plan information coming out, and I think a lot of us are really hungry and interested to see what comes out of that, too. So in terms of any ask or why really I'm here, there is no ask at this time, other than please keep this on your radar. I wanted you to have information from myself as things start to build out into the media, and if you can consider that there may be a role for the town, if there is anything in your strategic planning that fits, whether it's new trails that you'd like to have launched, or any openings, anything to that matter, I'm working closely with the departments. However, sometimes there can be other pieces that come up on the council side, so please keep it on your radar as well. On my end, there is extensive work to do in building this out and in generating funds. This will be about a $250,000 endeavor. So I am working with provincial partners and with a number of different funders to create a baseline that will enable that to happen. If there is anything that does come up from the town, I would be delighted to work with you, whether that's on a funding side, resourcing, or if there happens to be joint applications for economic development opportunities, please just, just reach out. And at that point, I'd like to turn it over for questions, and if there's anything else that I can provide for info.
Well, thanks very much for a very complete presentation. Certainly successfully has gotten the festival on our radar. I don't have any questions myself. Counselor Sanford, you do? Counselor Sanford?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks for your presentation. I was just wondering, what do you need in terms of infrastructure and support for the jump jam? And for instance, where would you hold an event like that?
Right now, because the town of Canmore, the Parks Department primarily, with some support from events and also engineering, but primarily led through parks, they actually operated and executed the majority of the jump jam last year. So Lisa Guest in that area has transition files over to me to assist, and is being great in terms of information sharing, and so whether you call it that infrastructure or assets or, you know, intellectual property, there's been a huge sharing there that's been very, very useful, in addition to obviously accessing the Benchlands Bike Park as part of the fundraising opportunity.
So can you hold the-
As part of the fundraising opportunity.
So can you hold the entire jump jam at the Benchlands Bike Park?
Yes, for this year for the fundraiser. For future years, we need to see what funding looks like. There's an opportunity that we can build a temporary, like what they'd call a pop-up park, depending on, again, the scale and interest of the users, so that would all be scaled according to funding. Yeah.
And do you imagine that there would be any road closures, or?
At this point in time, I'm not foreseeing any. If partners come on, specifically funding partners, and suggest that there could be an opportunity to go into a different area, I would consider that, but only in partnership and discussions with the town. Arts and events has been great in terms of helping me understand what their needs and priorities are, but everything that I can see at this point, the hopeful venue would be Millennium Park, and everything that I can see would be encouraging people to come down by bike, a strong community engagement program, obviously invitation for residents to come and partake in their own literal backyard, and everything would be accommodated and quiet down within a realistic hour for them. Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Crawford?
Your Worship, thank you, Ms. Bogdine, for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. Can you describe for me what a jump jam looks like and how it would be a fundraiser for you?
You bet. It can be everything from little strider kids who are going on little pump track, and pretty well, they get a participant award because everybody wins, and it is just super fun, families love it. All the way up to amateur pros who might be able to do some demonstration tricks, and that will be dependent on if they have an interest in coming. There's a major deficit right now in the BMX jump scene in Alberta. The only thing that we actually have on the landscape is nationals for BMX, and that's out of Calgary, but there's nothing of a jump nature. So that's a tremendous gap, and to support athletes, it's one of those things that give them a stepping stone opportunity. This will never be, and never have an intention on being anything as big as Crankworks, but it gives them something to start toward, and again, the community gels, because you have every age group playing, from Dougie Scott, who's 60 in his 60s, who's down at the jump park all the time, to little tots who are about three years old on their strider bikes.
And how, where's the fundraising element? Do people make a donation when they come, or?
Exactly. Yeah, and then if there's any food vendors who come on site, then they make a contribution as well. And it's not like it's gonna generate a tremendous, it's gonna generate a tremendously, like a large amount of money. It's not really that model, but it-
Sure, and build some awareness of what's coming.
Exactly.
What about, you said there's no requests now, and we're to keep you on our radar? And that's appreciated. Will there be an ask coming in the future? Do you foresee that?
At this point in time, I'm reworking the model because there's a number of opportunities on a granting side. There's been about seven iterations of my financial plan. The current right now doesn't have a specific ask for the town. The current right now doesn't have a specific ask for the town, however, I'd be really continue to love working as partners in the operations. The departments have been really, but I do not have anything slated for the town right now for a request.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Sealy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Ms. Bogdine, thank you very much for the presentation. It's very thorough, and I'm excited about the possibilities. Can you just summarize what this year's gonna be? You said it was a soft opening. How would the community generate interest for the official opening in 2017?
Essentially, it's a teaser phase. Because the jump jam, you know, it occurred and it was launched last year, that's great. But we can step it up in terms of the operations and the actual format. There's a number of things, again, with the whole inclusive point of view being put on it. There are some gaps when it came down to gender, when it came down to age. I think that we can do a better job marketing that to get, you know, the information and the word out on the street. Last year, the town did everything that they could on the resources that they had, but I'm expecting that I might be able to take an additional marketing approach that can actually draw in some different phases from around the region.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Well, that's great. Thanks very much for being here and presenting. I'll look forward to seeing it as it rolls out over the next couple of years.
Thank you for your time.
That, I will look to the minutes of the March 8 meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Counselor Crawford?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just the numbering for the adjournment resolution? Needs to be fixed?
If there's no other errors or omissions, move the minutes to be adopted as presented. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried unanimously. Okay, now, item D1, the Fire Rescue Staffing Study. Chief Sikorski?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just here to introduce a consultant that we've contracted to undertake the Fire Rescue Staffing Study. The staffing study was commenced back in 2015, and basically, just to give you a little of a run-through, is we had a proven strategic plan that was approved in 2011, and since that date, we've obviously grown as a department. We've de-integrated, or we have divested from our EMS services. So that plan is pretty much no longer valid, and it gave us an opportunity to get a professional third-party in to take a look at Canmore, give us some ideas of where we should be looking at, what our analysis should be, doing industry standards and period comparisons. And with that is that they have the final report today to present to you, and we're gonna be calling this Phase 1 of a Phase 2 project. The Phase 2 of this project obviously was approved in this year's capital project to complete the full master planning process. So I'd like to introduce Suzanne Charbonneau and Steve Thurlow. They're from Dillon Consulting, and they'll be, and Steve Thurlow, they're from Dillon Consulting, and they'll be basically going through the final report findings and answering any questions.
Thank you very much, and welcome to, welcome to Canmore, again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really nice to come back to someplace warm, because if you're familiar with Toronto, it was still snowing when I left home yesterday, so it's nice to be in the warm weather. As the chief mentioned, we're here to present the findings of the Fire Rescue Study. As I'm sure you have figured out, is a fairly technical document that was put in front of you. It's extensive, and it is intended to form Phase 1 of the two-phase process. So what I'd like to do this afternoon is just walk through with you some of the key points, particularly with respect to the methodology, what the drivers of the project were, talk about what some of the existing conditions are, so how you provide fire protection and emergency services today, look at some of those performance measures and objectives, some of the tentative or preliminary options that we've identified for you to consider as we go through the process, and then the recommendations that we've included in this phase. I would encourage you, as we go through this, it's about 30-some-odd slides. If there's a question on a specific slide, Mr. Mayor, if we could address it with each slide, it might make this flow a little bit better and keep everyone engaged, so I'll- slide, it might make this flow a little bit better and keep everyone engaged, so I'll leave that at your discretion. First piece would be to talk about the study's scope. So certainly it was a project that looked at a complete review of the demand for services, the types of emergency calls that you respond to, whether it be a motor vehicle accident or a structure fire, or certainly medical responses, how the department, both is comprised organizationally and how you deploy staff, whether it be full-time or your casual, or even the paid response firefighters. We were asked to look at how the existing management team structure works, how the workload is distributed through various levels, I would suggest, of the department. We've looked at best practices within the industry, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we define best practices, and then we've done a fairly significant analysis of how you've done a number of your typical peer comparators and then some that we've added. Ultimately, the options that we've created as a part of certainly to look at how we provide the most effective, efficient level of emergency services to provide the best value to the community. And then ultimately, we have included an implementation plan for your consideration within this phase, but I would suggest to you that as a part of this ongoing discussion, this is intended to form the foundation of the next piece of work, which is the actual Fire Master Plan, that's going to go much further in scope and look at future growth considerations and how the community is going to evolve and how we are going to work together with certainly staff and council to develop service levels. The method that we typically use within the industry across Canada, very much to start with an environmental scan, spend a lot of time working with staff in getting a lot of data, I think you've seen the examples of that within the report, looking at the various pieces of legislation specific to this particular province, and then, of course, the industry best practices. You will see within the report a fairly extensive level of emergency response modeling. We've taken a lot of your historical call data, looked at your node roll data, looked at your node road network, and modeled the current existing conditions within the community. We've done that in part with some stakeholder consultation, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through this, as well as looking at the workload at the various levels of the department. The options that we have developed to this phase are very much used, developed based on a phrase we call, which is "local needs and circumstances." And I can tell you that from working across Canada, it's very seldom you will ever find two municipalities that provide fire protection and emergency services the same way. You're very much like that. The, the community itself is unique. You have some unique challenges, you have some unique opportunities, but we find that very often... Go ahead. The stakeholder engagement that we've done to this phase of the project has been, you may recall, we were with you some time ago to conduct an initial council workshop where we talked about some of those industry best practices, got some feedback from yourselves on what you're looking for from the fire protection services. We've had a number of meetings with various staff throughout the project, through conference calls and communications and emails. We've had the opportunity to have some fairly extensive dialogue, both with the chief and the assistant chief, and a number of the key staff within the department. We also had the chance now to meet with the association executive of your full-time firefighters on two occasions. Last time as a part of this project, and then kicking off the next phase this morning, we had a quite nice discussion with them. And again, we've done the same with the paid-on-call firefighters. We'll be meeting with them over the next couple of days, and we met with them at the beginning of the study. Go ahead. So just to, as a recollection to that council workshop, just to review what the municipalities' responsibilities are, I'll focus on the bottom part of this slide, which is, it is ultimately council's responsibility to make sure the municipality complies with the Safety Codes Act. You have a role within the fire code and the building code, certainly to apply and ensure that the relative standards and regulator requirements are being met, and we have looked at that as a part of this study, as well as that will be a key component of Phase 2 as we get into the master planning process and look at the future growth of the community. From a best practices perspective, we define it as looking at some of the leading agencies within the industry in North America, the National Fire Protection Association being the largest. It includes a number of various standards. We've just referred to two on this slide being NFPA 1710 and NFPA 1720 that are related to the fire suppression services side, but there are a number of other standards, services side, but there are a number of other standards provided that the department currently uses for training and different, other different elements, which is very consistent within the industry. You will recall, we've been in front of you before talking about the Alberta Code on the HERF recommendations, the high intensity residential fires. You'll relate that back to the 10-minute response times and the development growth components. And then more recently, we've seen municipalities working towards the National Institute of Standards and Technology, which is very much an organization that looks at the performance objective sides, so we've looked at that. We've also looked at a peer comparison, as we'll see within the report, of what we believe to be similar risk and, and types of models of some of your peer comparators. Just quickly for you, we've presented what you have today. I want to focus mostly on the right side so that we have a clear understanding of the organizational model as it stands today, under the direction of the general manager, right down through the fire chief, next line being the assistant chief, who is a, a non-union person, then the full-time, and then at the bottom being your 36 paid response firefighters. To the left, we have a box that's referred to as the 16 career casual firefighters, all of which come together under this model that primarily focus on the delivery of fire protection and emergency services. Mr. Mayor?
Could you just expand a little bit on career casual? What exactly that?
The first two is that we have a pool of firefighters slash paramedics who, through your collective agreement, are utilized to fill in in the absence of a full-time firefighter. There's a list of 16 people on that list that have the credentials, skills, and competencies that when a full-time firefighter is off for sick time, vacation, or an approved absence, they fill in for that position.
So those 16 career casuals are firefighters that are trained to the same standards as the town of Canmore?
Yes.
And they're simply available on an ad hoc basis?
Yes. And represented by the collective agreement and your full-time firefighters.
So I understand that. It just, it seems odd in a way, from my perspective, to include those numbers as part of our, our staffing?
They're included because from our perspective, they make up a component of the pool of firefighters that we have available to us. So one of the things when we do the analysis and look at the availability is your ability to consistently deploy, so what's your minimum staffing level? You use the casuals to sustain that. They are also available in their certain circumstances. If we had a large incident, it's another pool of people we could be able to call on. So for us, there is an employment relationship, but there is an attachment through the collective agreement, so we want to look at every aspect of what the size of the pool is and what our capabilities are today.
So typically, in a large incident, would career casuals be called in in the same way that paid response or before paid response or...
Well, what's interesting in your current situation, you actually have a number of people who cross boundaries in these different pools. So you have some paid responders who may actually be also qualified to be a career casual, and so there's, that's part of the element we have to look at is who is actually available to do what, and what that turnout time, we'll talk about, may be for the different elements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So from an emergency call perspective, what we've done is we've gone back and looked at the last four years in particular, and what we're looking for is, has there been any spikes? Has there been any significant changes? Or is it relatively consistent? As you can see by the slide, that's the kind of slide we'd like to see, or reversed, that it would be on a declining mode. There, there aren't any spikes here. Not uncommon for us to go into a municipality that's undergoing a lot of growth, where we might see a spike, and those are the kinds of things that we like to look for. So this just gives us one of those first indicators in what the level of workload is. What we then do is start to drill down into what types of calls they were, and so there are a wide range of more than what's reported on this slide, but what you can see is fire calls, alarm calls, rescue calls, medical calls, and then what is remaining left from the data source. And what we're trying to understand here, again, from a workload perspective, is what are the, what are the big drivers? And it's quite easy to see in this slide is that medical calls do represent a large number of the workload types of calls that the department responds to. Next thing we did is to look at it from a percentage perspective, so we've taken that and put it into our little pie chart that starts to show that fires actually only represent approximately 9% of the total call volume. That's relatively consistent with a municipality of your size in our experience right across the country. We also put this slide in particularly in this instance because of the nature of the community, and it was interesting listening to the Bike Fest presentation, but we were looking at to see if there was any trends. And there is one here, in the, in the fact that there is a, there is an increase in call volume based on the seasons. And certainly during the summertime, you can see that we have a fairly significant 7% to 8% increase. That's completely consistent with the increase in population that occurs during the summer with all of the people coming to the community. It's something that we have to be very aware of because people drive call volume and people cause risk, and so as we start to look at this preliminary analysis in this project, and we'll look at it more in-depthly in the next project, we start to look at, are there different deployment models or different options, which you should be thinking about, given that this is something I think the community would like to see grow even further in the future as the community continues. What you see on this one, and you would obviously see within the report, is the way we model the data and conduct the analysis is based on the actual locations of the calls that you've had over the past four years. And so each one of those little black dots, although quite small to see within the presentation, represents an actual call. And when we're developing the modeling from a G I S perspective, we do two things. We take the road network and we look at your speeds and what the actual travel time of a fire truck would be from the fire station to an event, but then we go back and we calibrate the model by using your actual historical travel times. So it brings it into a very, very small, pretense percentage of flexibility. We, we know quite well what your actual experience is. And so by it, with the ability to track the actual data, we get a very representative model of what actually happens. On the peer comparison side, as I said, we used 11 different municipalities. We looked at their operating budgets, we looked at the size of the department, the type of department, whether it be full-time or composite, using full-time and paid response or volunteer, or even just fully volunteer. From that analysis, you'll see that you were the third lowest of the 11, from an operating budget perspective. You had the third fewest full-time fire suppression resources in comparison to those 11. We need to be cognizant of the fact that the town of Banff and the city of Camrose both have less full-time, primarily because they're still the traditional volunteer fire service. They started that way, they've managed, for many different reasons, to sustain it and continue to operate as a volunteer-only fire suppression department.
Councilor Crowe.
Thank you, your worship. Just with respect to the comparisons with other communities, did you use the full budgets, gross budgets, or did you break it down per capita so that we have some little ability to determine, taking into account the different sizes of communities?
I believe within the report, Suzanne's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but it did go down into the per capita level.
Okay.
I just, I want to draw a little parallel that when we're doing peer comparisons. They're a good benchmark, but we have to be very cognizant of the way that they are budgeted and disclosed and what's included. We can only get to a certain level. We can't dig into the details of it, so it's a benchmark. It's, I always raise a flag with councils, be very cautious on how you apply and use that information.
Right. I was just curious because, you know, how does Canmore compare in size? Are we also the third smallest or, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Good. So you may recall back in the council workshop, I started to introduce you into some terms. So this is partly a refresher course on the education and also to set the stage both for the work in this report and the next one. These are key terms within the fire service. So dispatch time being defined as the time it takes to receive the call from the client, I always refer to as Mrs. Smith, until the point that we're able to dispatch that call to the firefighters. Turnout time is the time required for the firefighters to react from receiving that call until they're on the truck, motor is started, ready to start traveling to the scene, and then travel time actually reflects the actual travel time of the fire truck to the incident. It's really important to recognize that depending on the model, so that staffing deployment model, whether they be full-time firefighters who are in the station all of the time, or paid response firefighters, turnout time can be significantly different. And so for the purposes of your report, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about turnout time, particularly with paid response firefighters, and travel time from the station to the various locations within the community. And so for the purposes of your report, and again, not that you have a legislated responsibility, but from a best practices perspective, it's in our opinion that, and we have applied that the NFPA 1720 performance objectives, which, as they are defined, are primarily used by volunteer or part-time fire departments. They rely on a population density in order to determine an appropriate firefighter deployment, and within that standard, there's a various, go ahead, you'll see various different demand zones. Within an urban area, looking for a population density of in excess of 1,000 people per square mile, down to remote areas, rural areas, even the suburban areas. And as you can see, as you go across the table, the number of firefighters declines, the response time being the turnout time in minutes begins to increase, and the performance objectives vary depending on the demand zone.
Could you just go back one slide perhaps?
Sure.
Maybe one more?
Okay.
So I have a question, and I'm not sure where's the best time to insert the question, but this may be. So when we're talking about turnout time, it's, a big factor is how many firefighters are required to roll with, right? So our practice is, if I understand it, is to wait until there's four firefighters in the hall to, to roll out?
So through the duration of this project, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were here at the beginning of the project, you were sending, you have two fire, minimum of two full-time firefighters on duty all of the time, and your practice was to send them, depending on the nature of the call. I believe now for calls such as alarm systems, you now wait until the first two paid responders or off-duty people get in, and then you send the truck with four staff. So depending on the nature of the call would depend on the deployment, whether it be two or four, whoever's available.
That is correct, and we haven't changed that.
That is correct, and when we brought Dillon on, we were just right in that transition period of confirmation with the province on what actually was a stop-the-clock feature and how many personnel that took to qualify for the 10-minute response map. So it was the province's understanding... So it was the province's understanding that it would take four people on the initial truck to stop the clock and in order for us to calibrate that 10-minute map. Our previous thing was is that we would respond with two members on a truck, investigate, and if it was alarm bells ringing and there was nothing found, the call was done, or if it was a fire that was found, and then we would dispatch more resources. So the biggest change was that we weren't meeting the building code spirit, is what we were told, and that we changed our operational practice to meet the spirit of the building code and to meet what industry was telling us to do, which led for longer turnout time.
Yeah, I mean, every time we talk about this, I have to kind of get up to speed again. So, but the, the reason it's considered not best practice or whatever is that two firefighters showing up on the scene of a fire cannot apply the water. Physically can't do that, is that what I understand?
Oh, no, it's okay, I can handle that. Mr. Mayor, there's a direct relationship within the industry between the number of firefighters deployed and what we call the critical fire ground tasks they can achieve when they get there. So there's a direct relationship. If you send two firefighters, I can tell you they can do this. If you send three firefighters, I can tell you they do this. The industry norm or the objective, the goal, that most of the standards, and as the chief has accurately said, the HERF regulations are looking for a minimum response of four firefighters. Because they understand and they acknowledge that if we deploy four, they know what can happen when they get there. And so that, that is commonly referred to as industry best practices, an initial deployment, the first truck of four firefighters. Now, I'll make it a little more complicated for you. There's wording within the, within a lot of the standards that says they can either respond on the same vehicle or respond simultaneously. So in other words, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the same truck as long as they get there at the same time. Ultimately, this is all about what is it you want those four firefighters to do safely and effectively when they get there together? That's the key.
Right. So one of the wrinkles in this is because of our observing the best practices and following the practice you've just described, our 10-minute response map is relatively small, which then requires new buildings, new developments to meet a higher level of safety design, which presumably adds some cost to the buildings. And our priority is to try to encourage more affordable housing. So it's kind of a push-pull thing there in my mind. And I'm hoping to find the best answer through this report and through the next phase of study that will answer that question.
Mr. Mayor, I couldn't have put it any better than what you just said. It is a push-pull between the capital cost of the development versus the ongoing operating cost of providing fire protection services. It is and will be for a long time a push-pull. You're absolutely correct, that's what it is.
Counsel Crousefield.
Thank you, Your Worship. To this same topic, I've only had a chance to very briefly go through the full report, and I've read the summary. Do you go into in the report an assessment of the current strategy so that that information is captured? So as we move on to the next strategy document, that we can actually say the two persons been evaluated. It doesn't work for these reasons because it doesn't meet the standards. Do you go into that?
We go into the level of detail that we've actually modeled your capabilities against two of those standards. So we've identified, we split the community into two areas. What we'll call the primary and secondary, representing the more built-up suburban area and then the rural area. And we get into some fairly technical analysis of your current deployment capabilities in respect to those two standards. In addition to the fact that we know what the HERF capabilities are through previous work that we've done.
Okay, so you...
I'm very cautious to counsel that HERF is a development standard. And we're talking about the community, everyone else's everyday level of emergency services. They're, although attached, they're very different.
So you, what I'm understanding is you didn't specifically address the two-person to start defensive in the strategy, but your model then goes to what you think would best meet the standard?
We're modeling against that. So for example, in the suburban area of the community, based on these population densities, we've defined an area. In that particular area under this standard, it looks for a deployment of 10 firefighters within a 10-minute turnout time and travel time. And within the report, you will see what your four-year performance is in respect to that. It's not, I can tell you, it's not near 80%.
No.
Okay? And we've done the same for calls within the rural area. Less density, more in the outlying areas. What that does for council and for us, and certainly for staff, is it gives us a really clear understanding of what your existing capabilities are. It's a great foundation, particularly given this type of study that you're about to embark on, is to look at and define strategies for what is the level of performance you're looking to achieve? Both in the short term and in the long term when we look at the future growth over the next five and 10-year planning horizons. I think, I think what I've learned in working with the community over the past year and a half or so is that you're at a very unique point in your growth, certainly in the emergency services side. You've had some history, you've been through the Fire EMS integration model. Now you have a strategy towards having a standalone, let's call it, fire department. I think you're at a very unique time to be able to make some decisions to do what I think is your goal, provide the most effective, efficient, provides the best value to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and get the whole thing up there. So basically, some of what we were just talking about, what we have done is divided the community into suburban area, rural area, and you can see by the population density, basically our discussion, just to explain this whole, that's what we've done. And what you see here is we've taken that GIS modeling capability based on a calibrated model and be able to start to look at and see what your existing capabilities are. This is the rural area that we've shown as an example. And if you look at the bottom left-hand legend, you'll see that in respect to this particular standard, which is six firefighters within a 14-minute turnout time and travel time, you are able to cover 34% of the roads in that rural area and 52% of the historical calls covered. Now, for us, those are two very different performance objectives. Roads covered is something we can measure in the future. We can look at your next five and 10-year planning horizons and areas where we think there's going to be future growth, and we can predict that same, what's it going to look like in the future? We can't do the same thing for calls covered because we don't know the calls are going to happen in the same place. But what the calls covered did is, don't forget, it validated, it calibrated the model to start with. So we knew we had a good baseline from which to start. Again, so just to give you again some understanding and to confuse you a little bit more, what you see on this slide is your various existing conditions based on those three time elements. Dispatch time, the turnout time, and travel time. We have some concern over the turnout time in particular. It's a direct result of the model, certainly the paid response model you're using. I would suggest to you that that is higher during the summertimes when it's a little more difficult to move around the community. Remember, your paid response firefighters have to get from wherever they are to the fire station before they respond. So these are the things, like I said, give us that baseline to start looking at in the future, what we can come back to you with is strategies and actual service level options based on a good knowledge of what your existing conditions are. So now what we've done is broken that down further into, within that defined suburban area of the municipality, against a benchmark of 10 firefighters in 10 minutes. So that's the turnout time plus the travel time. The blue line indicates the standard. And you can see that we're significantly higher than that. So we're not able to achieve that standard. That's something that we're going to be working at as we lork in that phase to the project. The same happens in the rural, much smaller gap. But just remember that there's not as many firefighters and we have a longer turnout and travel time from which to get there. These are all be discussion points for us as we come back into Phase Two and talk what your expectations are for the community. So within the executive summary, we tried to capture some, some of the key points of the study. We realize it's very technical. I won't apologize for it being technical because it needs to be to set the foundation for the work we're about to undertake. But what you'll see in the executive summary is that, in our view, from what we have seen, your staff in this department are at, or I would suggest in some areas, exceeding expectation of an effective workload capacity. You're there. I think they're doing a phenomenal job. There's many areas of the department where even with some long-term injuries and some sicknesses, the department is trying to even patch in and fill up for that to keep it at an effective workload. I think today, as I look at the department and even talking to the chief this morning, I think it's very much focused on the day-to-day operations, and we're missing an element. I hope we provide significant value to that in looking at the strategic direction. Where are we going? What does the next five and 10 years look like? I want to add to you that this is not uncommon. We work with a lot of clients and it's very easy, particularly within an emergency services, to get stuck within a day-to-day environment. It takes a project like this and some really hard decisions to get back into that strategic node, but you need to be there. I think I've hit on a little bit, but I think you're at a real key point in the evolution of this department. At one time, you were a volunteer fire service. You moved to the Fire EMS model. I think you provided an exceptional level of service there for various reasons, as you're fully aware of. You're back now to a standalone fire department. There is still some interest in being ALS capable. We're going to have some, lots of discussion about that model as we move forward. I think within the department, and even as I listened to some interviews this morning, I think your staff have done an exceptional job of weathering these. And there are staff who've been through this entire evolution. But there are some that have stronger commitments to one than the other. We're going to have to work together with you to determine the future of what this department looks like. On the cultural side, I will say at the onset of this project, there was a stronger emphasis of the differences between the full-time and the paid response. It came out clear in some of our discussions. I'll say I'm pleasantly pleased to be here sometime down the road, and I think it's better, I think you're going in the right direction. I think the leadership within the department needs to be commended for that. I think we may have identified some things. I think they've worked on it. Not unusual for us to see some transition, even within the work, as we work through a project like this to see efficiencies found and it be worked on right away.
So just to interrupt, so under the cultural differences, it's a key finding that there's clear evidence of this difference. But did you just suggest that that's improved since you did the work?
Not all of it, but you're going in the right direction. Okay, on the operational models, although I think there is some linkage to that, I think not uncommon for history to be a part of where we are. So you always, I always believe you have to understand how you got to where you are before you figure out where you're going. I think there is some uncertainty within the department. I think this project that we've just finished and the next project that we are undertaking is in part, has some impact on the morale within the department. There are folks who change, right? What does change mean? It makes people uncomfortable. And I think you need to be aware, that's happening within this department right now, that there's the fear of the unknown. What's it going to be when it's all done? We'll deal with that throughout the project, but we wanted to highlight to you so that you're just aware that there are some folks that are just not sure what it's going to look like. Go ahead. You'll see within our report, and you will definitely see more emphasis on this as we go into the master planning process, that within the industry and certainly within our experience, there is a phrase referred to as the optimization of the three lines of defense. The three lines of defense are really quite simple. Number one is public education and prevention. So it is without doubt, we know within the industry, public education is with respect to safety, and we do a lot more proactive fire inspections. We can make a safer community, and we can actually reduce call volume, and we can actually reduce the injuries and the loss of life. I can empirically give you the evidence that supports that. The second line of defense is the use of the standards and cords, excuse me, standards and, give me the word, I've lost the word.
Codes.
Codes that we have at hand through the various pieces of legislation to use on the inspection cycle. For example, enforcing some of the fire requirements within some of the various occupancy types. The third line of the defense is fire suppression. I stand in front of a lot of fire chiefs and some of them quiver when I say it, but fire suppression is the failsafe. If we failed at the first two lines of defense, we have to respond. On the response time piece, you will see that we're going to spend a lot of time in this next piece of work looking at ways and means to improve the turnout time. As I've identified to you, it's a significant concern of ours. It relates directly to your capabilities to deploy firefighters in a representative time. I'll also suggest that it has a direct impact on the total number of firefighters we're able to deploy to a certain type of event. And within the report, we'll talk about different types of building risks. Low risks, moderate risks, and high risks. And we'll talk about the number of firefighters we would expect based on those types of risks. Excuse me. I think we've kind of had this discussion about the integrated response model, Mr. Mayor, at the beginning, where I talked about the total number of firefighters initially deployed, that two and four discussion. We're certainly going to have, we've identified what you can do. We're certainly going to have some discussion with the chief and your senior staff about potentially different ways to deploy it, but certainly ways that we can enhance and improve the level of services that you do today. Again, I think I've kind of covered this a bit, but everything that we look at and do in the modeling and in our future analysis is going to be based on two key components. The first is your initial response, as I said. So the first truck that's deployed to the scene, it's an important element. But in my view, it's equally as important as the depth of response. So as important as the chief said it is to get four firefighters there, I'll tell you what, if it's a senior's dwelling or a high-risk residential occupancy, it's just as important to get the 14 or 20 other firefighters. So just briefly, I want to review this, but I think this is a discussion for the next phase of the project as we look at it. We've given you some options within this phase. First being to look at some things we could do in the short term to enhance the efficiency of the current model by improving the paid response model. So very much we're targeting that turnout time piece. Potentially low-cost implications, I think, might help to address some of the cultural challenges. We're looking at the first step of that to be moving towards performance objectives that better reflect the population density. Option two, I think I spoke clearly about the fact that it's very evident you have a population shift within this community. I think that's where you want to be and where you want to be in the future. I think that's where you want to be and where you want to be in the future. Your suppression capabilities, it's also the time when the streets are the most busiest, so getting to the fire station is the hardest. It's difficult for the paid response to travel. It's also a time when we typically know that getting paid response, they take vacation and they're busy during the summer. So we have all of these different pieces coming together where we've tentatively identified within this project, a concept of you thinking about increasing seasonal staffing. I think it's a discussion that needs to be pursued further, certainly within the next phase, but it may be a very good strategic way for you to address multiple challenges that happen during the summer, both on the paid response side, on the population density side, and our ability to deliver that service. Excuse me. Next option was, we went down the path of what if we only used paid response firefighters supported by a full-time training officer and a full-time fire prevention officer? This would somewhat follow the path of BAMP for one of those other municipalities. It is an option we're going to look at in more depth in the master planning process. It's an option we wanted to identify to you that we always want to look at every perspective of it. I can tell you initially, based on your historical recruitment and retention of paid response, this may be challenging to get the types of numbers we would be looking at and it would also impact that potential medical service that you're trying to keep and sustain, but we'll look at it and we just wanted to bring it to your attention. Fourth option was to look at increasing the number of full-time firefighters on duty at all times. So as you're aware, today you have two full-time on duty, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There are some challenges, as the chief and I have identified to you, about our deployment of that first. We will be looking at an option of increasing your, the time. You know right away that has a significant price tag to it, but we will look at it and we'll come back with options that look at either phasing that or implementing it, but more importantly, I think all four options, we're going to have some longer discussions around the overall organizational structure of the department, the rank structure, and how do we enhance the paid response role within the department?
So if I can interrupt again, I'm curious about option two.
Okay.
So if I recall, your slide earlier indicated there was 16 paid on-call. Is that right? 16 or 20?
Yes.
So how would that actually work? I mean, on the ground, so paid-on-call typically are people that have other jobs?
Okay, so in this, the concept we're beginning to develop for this option would be that you have your two full-time firefighters on duty, within the collective agreement, you have your eight, seven full-time staff. What, and this is going to take some discussion with staff and it may get into the wording within the collective agreement, may require some discussion, but our, our 50,000-foot level of it is that we would enhance the two full-time with two, what I'll call, part-time or temporary firefighters. So where they come from is yet to be discussed, but we would increase the staffing in the station to four people during the summer season.
So those additional firefighters might be from the casual, what was it called?
Career casual.
Career casual.
Or paid response.
Or paid response.
Or maybe it's a new category called part-time.
Right.
I want you, I want to keep the concept with you. The concept is, we know that during the summer, population increases, which means call volume increases. We know that happens. We also know there's summer that your turnout time of the paid response decreases because it's harder to get to that fire hall. So one of the options we want to pursue is during that summer season alone, we increase the number of firefighters that are actually in the fire hall, ready to respond.
So in, in suggesting option two, presumably there's been work done that would suggest that that's actually capable or, or we would actually be able to do that in Canmore?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Mayor, I'm quite confident that one way or another, there's a, a way to make this a model that's actually implementable. I wouldn't present it if I didn't think it was.
Great. And all, what's going through my mind is particularly in the summer, and maybe I'm too focused on the paid-on-call, what used to be volunteers. In the summer months, they're more busy with their other job, so less likely to want to...
Mr. Mayor, you're ahead of me. You're, you're ahead of me because you're trying to put a solution to the challenge. Let us go away and work at this. We have a concept, we have an idea that to this moment in time, no one's put a roadblock in front of me yet. I think it's, I think it's a very strong possibility that it would work. I think it would be very, very effective. How we do it is where you're at and I think you need to give us some time to work that out.
Fair enough. It's intriguing, that's all I'm saying, it's intriguing.
Good. I like intriguing recommendations. So within the report, there's not a lot of recommendations, but there's some, I, I kind of, I would refer to these as a more short-term, some that actually I think there's been some recognition and move towards already. First one being that we develop a formal long-call schedule for either the fire chief or the assistant chief. Let me tell you what I'm looking for in a high level. These are the only two non-union management positions within the department. Your fire chief and the assistant chief provide the leadership on a day-to-day basis. If you have a significant fire, you're going to want one of these individuals to be there for two reasons. The operational skill and experience they bring, and second of all, to protect the interests of the community. We have an informal process in place, we're simply suggesting that we start to look at formalizing that process, that one of them for major incidents is available. We'll work with staff on further definition. I want you to understand the concept, that's the concept. Have two pieces, operational and second is a look after your, your interests as a municipality, that the right decisions are made at the right time. If it looks like it needs to be made bigger, then let them make that decision. If it can be downsized, let that make them that decision. The second deals with part-time administrative assistant. I'm not clear the exact point of this right at this point in time, but it was a pleasure to walk into the fire hall this morning and see an administrative assistant there doing some work, so I think we're already making some progress in the right direction. The third was to start to formalize job descriptions for the lieutenants. In part, this is related back to the transition from your former model to your current model and we're just looking for some formalization of what their actual roles and responsibilities, what their job functions are. This is the beginning of it. I can tell you, as we look through the models and options in the next phase, there may be further recommendations added specifically to this kind of an objective. The next one is the fact that your career casual, that group we talked about, be required to attend and participate in ongoing training programs, including the full-time and paid response. Mr. Mayor, I think you used the word ad hoc. If you didn't, I will. Your career casual pool is a pool that can be used, maybe on a monthly basis, there, there's not a high level of frequency for some of those folks. What can happen is, and there are actually some that don't even live in the town, they come from other departments across the province, quite frankly. There can be an incidence where one of these folks comes in to fill in for a shift or, or a week for a full-time firefighter and it's been quite some time before they actually trained with or were a part of that team. That's important. It's very important that those four firefighters have the confidence, respect and trust in the group they're working with. There's a gap here and we're just trying to reduce that gap as much as we can. Number five, within the report, we bring your attention to some, what I would consider leading-edge work that the Alberta fire chiefs have done in respect to volunteer firefighter recruitment and retention. It has recently been adopted by the Canadian Association of Fire Chiefs, so work within Alberta is right now going across Canada. And it's simply strategies that deal with how do we recruit and retrain paid response or volunteer firefighters. We're suggesting that in your future recruitment processes, you start to look at some of the strategies that are within that program. It's an excellent program. Number six, I have all the confidence that you're, you are, you are in this direction, this is where you're going to. But I had, again, an interesting interview with some of your staff this morning. What we want to ensure is that all of your firefighters, whether they be a full-time, a career casual or paid response, are all trained to the space, same basic skills and competencies and that there is a record to validate that always in the department. There can be some gaps in your current model. You, you have an attendance requirement on the paid response where they must attain 70% of the training exercises, but it doesn't speak to the training objectives. It doesn't speak to them having attained 100% of the pertaining, performance objectives. So we're just making sure that all of the liability pieces and your role as an employer from an occupational health and safety perspective are addressed. And number seven is, just, it's a strategy we've seen applied in a lot of departments having the same problem as you do, particularly in the summer months, where there is what we call a green light program where paid response firefighters are allowed to use a flashing green light in their vehicle as a warning system that they're a firefighter. It works very, very well in some communities. I will tell you, it takes a significant public education campaign to go with it so that the public understands what it is, signage and media releases, but I tell you, once it is in place, it can work very, very effectively to do something we want to do, which is reduce turnout time.
Counselor Sanford.
Thank you, worship. Just on that previous green light program, does that not add to the turnout time that, is it, is it time-consuming for them to attach the green light to their vehicle or is it...
They have it in, they, you can do one of two ways. You can install it in your vehicle permanently, sits up on the dashboard, or you can have what I always call the rover light, you can have it sitting on your seat and put it up there, but it's very much like I relate it to the snowplow operators that run around in their four-by-four pickup trucks. It's the same size, it's a green flashing light and it does the same thing. It's a warning system.
Right, but it takes time to put it on.
It's there all the time.
Okay, so...
They simply, a flick of the switch, they turn it on and they go into a call.
Okay, good, thanks.
Counselor Cross, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, looks like Counselor Russell's up next.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Counselor... Is that recognized in Traffic Safety Act?
I don't think so. Is, is any, yes. I have to check, I'm in Alberta, I'm not in Ontario today. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With regards to the, the green flashing light program, and maybe this is a question for administration, a lot of your recommendations are things that, that the department could go and, and implement as part of their regular work. Would we, would this have to come to council to get approval for the green flashing light program?
Ms. DeSoto?
Well, from my perspective, Chief Sikorski can correct me if, if you wanted to say something different, I, I don't think it would require approval, however, we would certainly want council to be aware of what we were doing and, and launch any kind of communication protocols to the community, so you would know well in advance of us doing anything like that.
Okay, so somewhat similar to that is as we work through this next phase and we, you know, we talked about this significantly, one of your staff this morning, is looking for technology solutions, both the alerting process for the paid response and the off-duty. I'm going to extend that a little bit further into looking for technology solutions for any within the department with respect to records management, records keeping, processes where we can find a technology solution that will improve our performance. There are, let me put it in a different way, within this industry, this is the single biggest growing environment. There are a lot of new technologies coming out on a daily basis that we need to be thinking about and researching to see where we can find it. This is a significant area of opportunity. The next one being that the department look at and start developing standard operating guidelines for, an outline for performing fire inspections. Now, this is going to get expanded on in the next phase. All we're looking at in this phase is for the department to start drafting out procedures and policies on how they would enhance the fire inspection, public education programs within the department. It will get much more extensive in the next round, I can tell you that.
Okay. Number nine, I can't help but chuckle, talking about enhancing the alert, alerting process just makes me remember when we tested the siren a few years ago.
Gets the public attention really quick.
Oh, no, this one didn't. It, it had to stand, you had to move outside of the fire hall and even then you couldn't really hear it. That was kind of a flop, that one.
Oops.
Which blows me away because it used to work really well in Canmore, the same siren, but anyway, clearly that's not an enhancement that we want to pursue.
Mr. Mayor, that ends the presentation. If there's any other questions, I'm certainly willing to give it a shot.
Well, I have a couple of que, I mean, I, thanks for answering the questions I had through the report. I, I have questions more for administration. Chief Sikorski or the CIO around next steps and timeline on the process and I don't know if we've established a target date for a revised fire strat plan or...
That's a great question. So today was actually the embarking of phase two, so we're kind of economizing on travel time. We had consultants fly down to do the final report on phase one and also to kick off phase two, so the interviews and things that Steve was talking about today are part of phase two. They're going on today, tonight and tomorrow and tomorrow night. And then that project basically is scheduled right now to be in final format in October and in a, in a kind of a final draft product by August. So that's the timelines that's laid down, the terms of reference basically have been drafted to coincide with not only these recommendations that I've been going there to investigate those further, but then also to enhance what our plan would be for the next five to 10 years for the fire rescue department involving all stakeholders, so external stakeholders and internal, things like planning, engineering, where our growth is going to be at, things like that.
Great. If, if council is interested in having the discussion around implementing one or more of the options that are proposed, how would that happen?
So currently, everything that's been presented to you would have to come back to as a, a decision meeting and then anything with a financial impact of that would have to have a financial source to it. Some of these things are an operational nature, so if we can do it within budget, we feel that we would just go ahead and do it. Some of the things such as purchasing green lights for a green light program might be a good fit for a photo radar reserve funding request and come back to you for a decision of, things like that. So there are certain categories in here I think that can be implemented immediately or actually we have, as Steve has said, have, since they've been identified, we've solely been implementing and there's things that would have to come back to council for, for approval and a funding source.
Clearly, a number of the recommendations appear to be administrative in nature. If there was interest in, in pursuing, let's say, option two, is that something that could be made to, do you already intend to be bringing back recommendations in the near future coming out of this report?
I, I think the, the option two is, it's, it's actually intrigued everybody to see that happen. To see that happen this year, I think, would be very interesting and we'd have to have a funding format for it. So, one, we don't have the funds to, to do the additional hours and we would have to take a look at the staffing model. Those basically have not been 50,000-foot level. I think it's something that we could definitely take a look at for 2017 and process for that in, starting in June, July.
Okay. That's great. Ms. DeSoto?
Yeah, just further to Chief Sikorski's comments there, it would also require some amendments and negotiations with our union contract to do any kind of additional staffing model.
Right.
So that will take... So, that will take some time.
Okay. Well, thanks very much for the presentation. I don't know, are there other counselor questions? Nope, that was great. I know we are starting on workshop today, or after this meeting, for Phase Two, starting Phase Two, so be able to discuss a little bit more detail what's in the very lengthy summary report. Thank you for that. Turning now to Item D2. Creek updates.
Administration is here today to update council and the community on progress made in safeguarding Camor from steep creek hazards and to outline next steps in the program. It's been nearly three years now since we first assembled in council shortly after the 2013 floods. At the time, we were relieved that no one was seriously injured or killed. We were celebrating the community's response to the flood, and we were starting down the long and difficult path of physical, social, and psychological recovery, both as a municipality and as individual residents. And that recovery continues for many today. We identified at that time that we needed to better understand what had happened to us, to know what to expect in the future, and to work through options to plan and prepare for the extreme behavior of nature around us. There was little in the way of roadmaps, and we were fairly light on answers, but we latched on to the information we could find and embarked on a deep dive as a community into the world of debris flows and debris floods. Early on that journey, on the recommendation of a Swiss resident up in Cougar Creek, I visited a community called Brienz in Switzerland, which eight years before our flood had experienced debris flows on two of their community creeks and had similarly devastated their community. At the time of our floods, they had just completed their program of hazard study mitigation design and construction and emergency response and to safeguard future generations. Brienz has served as our model in a number of ways for the way we've structured our program, engaged our community and partners, and have tackled our challenges, and we hope through this program to achieve similar timelines and outcomes as we work towards protecting from our larger creek hazards. As we near three years on from the 2013 floods, we're approaching what we see as a midpoint in our efforts. We have many of the answers as to what happened. We have a good idea of what to expect in the future and what can be done to protect our community. As we have been since the first days of the flood, we're aggressively working towards making the community safer. We're seeing thoughtful and modern structural mitigation approaches develop. Our local policy development for steep creeks can be considered global best practice and at the forefront of a movement towards risk-based decision-making. And we continue to develop plans for what we know is an inevitable need again to respond in an emergency by preparing ourselves with really good information, thorough planning, and emergency response training. Now, it's quite challenging, both from a technical perspective in the design, the permitting process, but also because it's occurring in the period after disasters, when the natural tendency is to forget, to move on, and for other priorities to begin to creep in. Fortunately, we also have tremendous support. We continue to work with some of the most knowledgeable and talented engineers, hydrologists, and geoscientists in the world, passionate local environmental scientists, supportive native communities, and world-renowned advisors, Dr. Hubel, Dr. Church, and Dr. Morgenstern. And council and the community continue to be behind the program and the principles it's based on. Our provincial partners are critical and continue to collaborate and support all areas of the program. Recently, Alberta Transportation has approved and committed to fund approximately $2.7 million in their funding towards priority projects in the Bow Valley. This includes a joint project between the town, the MD, and transportation for Pigeon Creek, and for two other creeks that we'll be recommending, two other creek projects we'll be recommending today. It's this type of collaboration that's been critical to the success we've seen in the program. We also have a unique and talented internal team. We have a progressive fire department, IT, communications, social services, public works department, who are doing excellent work in preparing our community not just for flood, but for all emergencies. We have a thoughtful and considerate planning team that's been leading the development of risk-based policy. And at the center of all of this, we've had Felix and Julia, who continue to impress with their own dedication, talent, and ability to get things done in the face of enormous obstacles. When I worked back at Transportation Infrastructure with the city of Calgary, our director at the time would say of our team, "The difficulty is done at once, the impossible takes a little longer," some famous quote. And I'm sure many days, Julia and Felix feel like they've been given an impossible task, and time and again, they keep making things happen. So, I'm really proud of the work our team's done, and in a moment, I'll turn it over for them to provide their update. Actually, I'll turn it over to them now. I'll have some closing remarks after.
Okay, thank you. Shouldn't run that slideshow though during presentation, because I can't take my eyes off of it. It's hard to focus on what you're saying when those photos are going by. Just saying. He didn't want me to be listening to what he said? That's the point? Okay.
All right. So, I will give you a brief update on the Mountain Creek Hazard Mitigation Program, what the work we've done so far to date, and what will come next. Never works, okay. So, three years ago, council approved the Mountain Creek Hazard Mitigation Program with the following key results to complete. Stakeholder alignment, assessing of the hazard, assessing of the risk, implementation of successful active hazard mitigation, and implementation of successful passive hazard mitigation. If we break this down to our creeks, there are certain tasks to be fulfilled, starting with forensic investigation, which is more or less just the documentation of the event that happened, short-term mitigation to reestablish damaged infrastructure, and to protect in the short term, assessing the hazard that's posed, that we are facing, assessing the consequences, the risk, meaning the risk, and based on those results, doing option analysis for long-term mitigation. You've seen all of this, so I go through very quickly. On Cougar Creek, we finalized short-term mitigation before the flood season of 2014. Hazard and risk assessment was done pretty quickly, too, so the outcome was that we are facing very high levels of risk on Cougar Creek. As we all know, we are in unacceptable ranges of risk here. And based on those outcomes, we did an option analysis for long-term mitigation, and the outcome was that we flood retention structure that was adopted by council last January, so last year in January. So, on Three Sisters Creek, we also finalized short-term mitigation. The hazard assessment and risk assessment was finalized as well. The hazard map shows quite a different hazard than in Cougar Creek, for example. So, here, you can see that most of the hazard is shallow overland flow, which would be the yellow hazard zones. That's what's inundating our community, and that's the reason why we do not really exceed very high risk levels as, safety risk levels as in Cougar Creek. So, we have three parcels where we do exceed safety risk of 1 in 100,000. What we have to deal with here is Three Sisters Parkway, that was a very important access and digress route in 2013. So, based on those results, we did a long-term mitigation option analysis study, and the outcome was more or less this concept. So, we are planning to do a deflection berm on top, so we want to prevent... We want to prevent the flow to the walls towards the community on top. We want to do some channel rehabilitation all the way from the pond to the parkway. We want to do some parkway overflow protection. This is in case of an event where the cover capacity is exceeded. We want to keep the parkway open for emergency reasons and access reasons. So, we want to do a safe overflow of the downstream face of the parkway, and we want to do local building protection of these condominium buildings on the right. And Felix will talk about our actual plans for this year a little later. So, on Stone Creek, we also finalized short-term mitigation right after the flood, so it was finalized before flood season of 2014. Hazard and risk assessment was done. Here we have one unit, like one of those condominium buildings on Stone Creek with very high risk. We have four other buildings with high risk. Yeah, so, again, this informs our option analysis. The option analysis is not completed yet, but we are about to complete it soon. We need to do some stakeholder engagement around the option evaluation still, and have to select an option for long-term mitigation. We are planning, though, to submit a funding application to ACRP, which is the Alberta Community and Resilience Program in September. Stoneworks Creek, we did not do short-term mitigation, we did some repairing cleanup. Hazard assessment has been done, so this picture shows the hazard map. Here, we can also see we have a lot of overland flow, which is the yellow area, towards the east and over the highway. We also have some orange areas, inundation or evolutions towards the east. So, with this, we go into the risk assessment and the option analysis. The risk assessment for Stoneworks Creek has not been completed yet. We are planning to do this pretty soon, so we want to do this under consideration of possible future development on the fan.
Just have a question there. So, it seems on the other creeks that there's a progression, that the risk assessment is done before beginning option analysis, but on Stoneworks Creek, it's noted that option analysis underway, but the risk assessment hasn't started.
Yeah, so on Stoneworks Creek, it's a little bit difficult, the situation, because we don't really have an outlet to the Bow River. So, we have some small culverts leaving underneath the highway, but it's really just, yeah, not... They're not big enough, and we have to deal with some problems here where we put the water, so what do we do with the water? So, we started the initial phase of the option analysis, looking at what is really feasible to do here at all, and so, and the outcome of the risk assessment will show us to which extent are we going to do it. For example, if we have a deflection berm, how high would it be to meet our risk criteria?
So, would risk assessment yet be done on Stoneworks Creek, or...
Yes. So, the plan is to, yeah, get this initiated pretty soon, I think. We want to have everything done again by September, when we want to submit a funding application, so we hope we're going to be done by then. And this will, yeah, for Stoneworks Creek, this will run a little bit parallel to, you know, assess what's a potential for development. Yeah, so, everything according to the draft MDP we have now, so we want to do that in accordance to this rules we established there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, the goal is, again, the submission of the funding application in September. This here is Pigeon Creek. We finalized the forensic investigations far and are also working on short-term mitigation, hazard assessment, risk assessment, and optional analysis at the same time, more or less. So, we hope we can finalize the short-term mitigation before this flood season, so pretty soon here, in the next two months. Same for the hazard assessment and the risk assessment. Yeah, and the option, so as soon as we have the results from the risk assessment, we refine our optional analysis and try to submit a funding application in September.
So, through the agreements we've had with the MD and others, the town of Camor is involved up to the option analysis point on Pigeon Creek, but it suggests the long-term mitigation the town has no role in?
That's right. So, we will bring it to the point where we have a funding package, funding application package, and we will hand it over to the MD from there.
Great. And Mr. Osarte referenced earlier that the funding has been approved for Pigeon Creek mitigation. Does the town have any involvement with dispersion, the application of those funds, or is that entirely regarding the long-term mitigation?
Short-term mitigation funds have been approved through FREC, and the MD has applied for this funding, so they are leading this project, more or less. So, they have funding for short-term mitigation left, and we could get support from Alberta Transportation to do some portions along their right-of-way, too. So, for the long-term mitigation, I would assume that the MD of Big Horn would apply for the funding as well.
Right, okay. Good.
Okay. So, other creeks, we also have other creeks, as you know. We are working with developers to finalize studies there where we need them. So, for example, a hazard and risk assessment study was finalized for Stones Canyon Creek, and preliminary hazard assessment studies have been finalized on Smith Creek lands. One of the parts of the Mountain Creek Hazard Mitigation Program was also the implementation of passive mitigation, and passive mitigation is more or less this kind of mitigation where you don't affect the creek at all. You try to manage your risk otherwise by avoiding the risk at all, or having emergency preparedness plans. So, right now, we are working on, as you know, the adoption of steep creek policy in the MDP. Following the MDP, it will be implemented in the land use pilot as well, and we are working on engineering design guidelines for the cases where you are allowed to develop in steep creek, low-impact areas, but you would require some local mitigation to do so. Yeah, and we have worked on emergency preparedness plans. We've got them for all our creeks so far, for this, to be prepared for this flood season. Yeah, and Felix will talk about this more later, too. Okay, if there was any questions... Okay, was any questions?
Are there any questions from members of council? Thanks for that presentation.
Thank you, Julia. I will basically give an update on Cougar Creek, what we've done up to now where we're at. So the design and the report of the debris flood retention structure are well underway at this point. The permitting process is fairly complicated. It's very unique nature, very unique work that we're doing right now. Location of the structure in the Wildland Park makes it a little bit more complicated too. And that has resulted in extended timeframes and also additional costs. We'll talk a little bit more about that pretty soon here. The costs are actually managed within the contingencies of the project that have been approved already. And the project completion delays are being offset right now by making improvements in the channel. So we're proposing to do some, some improvement in the Cougar Creek channel at the culvert of Alcorn Boulevard and also Trans-Canada Highway. I'll get back to those in a second here. The risk is also being managed to some extent by working on our emergency response planning and the deployment of passive mitigation. So Julia touched a little bit on the flood, flood response map. I don't have a slide for this, but we basically have worked quite a bit on a map for every creek, a map for every creek that we have in town with a response plan in the back. And those are based on very similar concept as the Wildsmart and the Wildfire maps. So we work with these, with the fire department, protective service, services. And yeah, as I said, like all those maps are in a working draft right now for this flood season. And we're improving them as we go along to, after each meeting that we have, we see something that needs to be changed, we go and change it on the fly, basically. And I'll talk a little bit more about passive mitigation later in the presentation too. We're also currently exploring a design alternative for the outlet structure of, of the debris flood retention structure. That would improve potentially its constructability and also the ease of long-term maintenance on the structure. So that's what we've been doing with this little bit of extra time that we have. So the structure itself is the same base design as what we've presented at last council. Our sixty percent design was submitted in December of two thousand fifteen. And all our third-party reviews were completed by mid-January two thousand sixteen. And that's basically when it was deemed that we should probably investigate a few concepts and elements of the design itself and the structure to ensure that the proposed design is the most durable, is also has the lowest maintenance requirement as possible. And again, its constructability is maximized. We also did an expression of interest. It's basically a call to deep foundation specialists in, in North America to actually be able to work with them and review the concept at this point and explore different options that we had in mind also with those specialists. We expect a dam safety submission to be done at the end of June two thousand sixteen. And that's one of the requirement that we have to, to go through for this project. And then also the channel work that we've talked about a little bit, the detailed design of that and tender package. And also, we also need to, also need to do approvals on this. That's nearing completion. So we've, yeah, we've submitted our application for our permitting process already. And I'll show a little bit more of the, what we're planning on doing for the channel work here. The EIA itself, all field work has been completed. The final terms of reference have been issued by AEP. The analysis by all disciplines are well underway. A draft report is being written by our consultant as we speak. First Nations consultations are ongoing. I was actually just this morning in Calgary, meeting with the Sixica. And we're, we have some field visits planned this week with two different First Nations, actually one tomorrow and one on Friday up in Cougar Creek. The expected submission of the EIA is end of June two thousand sixteen. So that's when we're planning on submitting the, the whole package to AEP. And then basically the EIA should be deemed complete, what we're expecting right now is by mid-two thousand seventeen. So basically, this is where we're at in the EIA process. We have our final terms of reference. And then we need to submit the, the report. It will be reviewed by AEP. Once they are satisfied with the report, they might ask some questions, we respond to those. Once it's complete, then it goes to the public interest decisions. It's basically when the, the side of the project is in the best interest of the, of the public. And if it is, then we go to, we get our approvals to be able to proceed with the project. Scheduling, just a little bit of a review here. So submission of design and EIA to AEP late June two thousand sixteen. Review of the EIA itself and the design by AEP and approvals in place six to eighteen months. And then construction completion should be about two years after approvals are in place. Now, what we're planning on doing this year, the channel improvements, this is work that we'd like to take on this year. So we're talking about the culvert inlet and outlets of Alcorn Boulevard and also the Trans-Canada Highway. This would improve the hydraulics, minimize the maintenance, and it'd be essential for good performance during a flood. This would be beneficial right away. If we construct this, this year, it would be beneficial for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, until the structure is fully built. It's also an integral component of the long-term mitigation plan that we have for Cougar Creek. We also already have a commitment from Alberta Transportation to fund a big portion of this work for, within the Alberta Transportation right away. So basically right at Trans-Canada upstream and downstream. Advantages of proceeding with this work right now, it, as I said, it provides additional protection for the two thousand seventeen flood season. Recent tenders have yielded some really good pricing, as we're expecting, for similar work. And it was also provide positive impact to local and provincial economy. If we also did this work, we can also complete our landscaping work at Cougar Creek since we would, it would be a little bit, not, not the best way to, to do things if we'd have to landscape and then go and remove some landscaping to actually do this work. So we'd like to do the channel, the cover improvement first, and then complete the landscaping of basically a channel between the Trans-Canada and Alcorn Boulevard. And I'll show you the landscaping concept too. So Alcorn Boulevard, what we're talking about is just this portion here. So it's about thirty-five meters or so upstream from the culvert upstream and about twenty meters from the culvert downstream. What we're doing is a replacement of wing walls to improve the hydraulics a little bit longer, curved a little bit differently, so that water flows in and doesn't back up as much as what we see, we've seen in two thousand thirteen and also previous, previous events. Downstream itself is very similar to what we have, is just a little bit more robust, robust, so it's actually lasts longer. A little bit of a cross-section of the, the actual wing walls really close to the culvert, that's just by the culvert itself. And this would all be in big rocks embedded in concrete. And this would extend, as I said, about thirty-five meters upstream. The downstream side is, is basically, yeah, the same, similar shape as what we have right now, however, it would be the same rocks embedded in concrete instead of just being bottom of the creek. For the Trans-Canada Highway, it's similar, however, we're not changing the wing walls, we're just extending them slightly. And they are fairly low. So what we want to do is to increase their height also, so that same thing when the water accumulates their backs up there, it, it, it's easier for the water to actually enter the culvert. And also do the bank protection downstream of the Trans-Canada Highway to actually better protect the, the heliport. So that is the work proposed at the Trans-Canada Highway and the culvert of Alcorn. Now, a little bit of an update on the landscaping. So we did phase one landscaping last fall, Cougar Creek. All this, this work is already funded through DRP. That's money we already received from the province for, after the flood of two thousand thirteen. Phase two is a remark for this year after we do the culvert improvements. And this portion of the work would be from, we, phase one was basically from the private property all the way to the bottom of burn. And now we want to do bottom of burn all the way to the, the concrete mats and also includes the, the pathway work. And again, the, this, the channel would need to be done before we can actually do this. A little bit of what it looks like, big improvement compared to what it used to be. We've basically done lots of plantings. And then there's also more shrubs and smaller trees to be planted in the next phases of the work for phase one. Phase two, we're looking at creating some nodes, recreating a little bit of what we lost, as I said, the pathways and then the, where the bridges intersect, the, the main pathways will be where the work is going to be focused for this next phase here. Now passive mitigation, Julia talked a little bit about that. We're looking at this year implementing some live monitoring equipment. This would basically increase the safety by allowing, allowing live monitoring of dangerous or remote sites. Also, it would allow continuous live monitoring of those sites from an emergency center or command post. So we can basically set up a camera, for example, at debris, debris net site and be able to look at that live feed from the civic center or the fire, the rescue trailer, something like that. And it can also be used for other applications. There's been lots of discussions with fire crew and also IT. And it sounds like what we're looking at right now could be used for several other applications also in town. We're just kind of like going through motions of looking at what else is possible with that. We'd also like to install some weather monitoring equipment. One of them would be up in the Cougar Creek catchment. And this would aid in, aid in determining the response requirements and monitor events as they unfold. So what we're talking about here is we'd like to know how much snow is up there instead of us having to fly, go dig, measure the snowpack, measure density. We could get that live pretty much all the time. And that would help us basically look at when we have a weather forecast coming in, how much rain is coming. If we have a lot of snow, that would be translated potentially into water coming down Cougar Creek. And then it would also provide some, pose that data event for assessment purposes. So if we have a, a big event, then we know exactly how much water, how much rain has fallen in Cougar Creek. So financial impacts, basically the structure design and EIA completions were currently estimated at three point, three million, four hundred fifty thousand dollars to complete this phase. We currently have authorization capped at three million. And this would be funded through also a FREC program. I'll show you a little bit of a funding breakdown, next slide. The channel improvement works, we're talking about an estimation, estimated at about three point three million dollars. And we have a commitment from AT of one, one million, three hundred seventy thousand for this. The rest would also be our FREC money. Passive mitigation, we're estimating at about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And this would also be funded through the FREC. So column left is just approved budget. Middle column is what we've, what's been approved already by council last January. And the recommended authorization would be what would be a, looking at approval in a later council meeting. So basically, the town commitment wouldn't change. We've got money from Alberta Transportation and we'd just increase our FREC allotment for this, this work here, basically. And the total, instead of three million, would be six point nine million that we would ask to be authorized.
So just a few questions from your presentation. And on that last point, then, the, the increased work that administration is proposing would all be work that would be, or has been a part of the, the full plan all along, is just coming ahead of some of the other, so it's a bit of a out-of-sequencing?
Correct, yeah. The passive mitigation was part of our plan when we got the project approved in, in January last year. And the, some of the work for short-term mitigation that we done in Cougar Creek, we had planned on doing several ground cells that we ended up doing only one way upstream. So we wanted to, before building those, we're a little bit unsure about the effectiveness and all that. So now we have really good, a much better understanding of what's needed in the, in the channel. And this would replace partly some of the short-term mitigation we didn't do. And also, as we said, the, the improvement at the culverts are quite beneficial even without the, the structure.
So that was another question. If you could just help me understand how that culvert work, how does it actually affect the degradation that occurs upstream?
Yeah, so basically, the way the cover is currently designed, especially at Alcorn Boulevard, the, the angle of the wing walls are really wide open. And what happens, the water flow comes in and, and basically gets backed up there. It's hard for the water to funnel through it. So the proposal is to actually, that's all based on analysis, hydraulics of, through software analysis and all that. But by making the, the wing walls narrower, not narrower, but the, the angle narrower and elongating them and then making them curved, it would also, it will provide less backwater effect. And that's when you get backwater effect, that you get all the sediment depositing right there because the water slows down quite a bit. So we're trying to minimize the slowdown of the water going through the culvert. If you can keep it flowing quickly, then basically you, you, yeah, you diminish the amount of degradation you get in, right in front of the culvert.
Okay, I think I understand that. Just one other quick question around the First Nations consultations. And you indicated they're ongoing. And can you just give me a little more perspective on what you're experiencing there?
Yeah, so through the EIA, we have to do First Nation consultations. The Alberta, the Aboriginal Consultation Office from AEP has basically told us that we have to do consultation with Treaty Seven. So all the First Nations basically around, in the area around here. And we started consultations in October, right as soon as we got the word from the CO to consult with Treaty Seven. And basically, typically speaking, what happens is you go out and do a first meeting. And it's through a consultation officer, officer that they have, that, that's all they do. They consult with different parties and, and groups. And it's explain the project, to show them what we're trying to achieve, what we're trying to do, so that they understand a little bit better what's at stake, what we, basically what, and how it actually changed their use of the land, for example, if they know that they have any pictographs or anything of significance in the area where we want to actually do our project. So we share all that knowledge. And most of them, they actually want to come for a site visit after, which means that they bring, typically speaking, elders, technicians. They go out to site, they look at all the walls, they look at if there's also some plants, roots, any material that they still use for some of their... some plants, roots, uh, any material that they still use for, um, some of their ceremonies. They also, uh, want to understand the impact that the project will have on the land in terms of, uh, they can still go in and hunt, for example, up there, all kinds of things like that. So up to now, we've done our initial consultations and tomorrow we're starting the, well, we had a, a first field visit a week and a half ago, but it was, um, just a quick one to come and take a look at the sites, see if they can actually bring elders. But tomorrow we're starting for the, the big one. Like it's a, it's a full day that they spend up there looking around and taking photos and looking at all the plants and, and pictographs, if any, and things like that. And based on all this, they basically look if there's any major impact that the project will have on, on their, um, use of the land or any of the, uh, anything they find in there. And they give us a letter of non-objection for the project. So if there is anything that they find that they need to, uh, we need to take care of, they'll let us know. It could be some plans they would like to get before we actually construct. It could be a few things like that. But we've already done a, an assessment from an archaeologist and didn't find anything of significance up to now, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crossley.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you very much for the presentation, the update. I have a few questions. Uh, you indicated that the Cougar Creek, uh, construction would conclude two years after approvals. Um, I was just wondering how that fits as far as timing goes. The, the, the EIA would deemed complete in June 2017, but in another slide, it showed some regulatory approvals after that. So are we looking two years from 2017 or are we looking at some starting point after that?
Yeah, mister, me, yeah, I'll have to look at my slides again, but basically when we, we call it deemed complete, it's, it's been through all the process.
Okay.
So the report is complete and then it's been through, uh, the, the public dis, uh, interest decision and we'll also have our approvals. So once we have all that in place, then we're talking two years later.
So we're, we're looking at this point, subject to all of that flowing, the way we would hope it would be, construction complete 2019?
Yeah.
By the end of the year?
Yeah, we're, we're talking, if everything would go really quickly from now on, it could be end of 2018, for example.
Okay.
So 2018, 19.
Okay, thanks. With respect to the landscaping and the articulated concrete blocks, will it be covering them very much? Like there's the two sample sections, it won't go that far down all along the, the creek, will it?
So we're still debating a little bit what we're going to do with that. Um, this year, what we want to do is we want to do the, the top portion. And, um, we've been discussing an option of, uh, maybe not, not doing as, um, intensive as what we did for the, the test plots. And, um, there's been some other examples, um, in other parts of, of Canada and the United States that they, they didn't completely cover them and they had some really good results too.
Yeah.
So we'll be looking at, um, at doing the first probably two meters this year.
Yeah.
And only potentially, uh, putting some, some soil between the mats and seeding that. And if you have grass that's long enough, then you basically camouflage it to some extent.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, cause I was, I, I was thinking about that recently, uh, living right in the area and, I don't know, maybe I'm just getting used to it, but, uh, it's, I, I, all of a sudden I thought if you do too much landscaping down it, you're just going to be wasting money and materials if we get a, uh, an event that it works for, but then they all get washed away, you know? And so, um, uh, yeah, I, I would think that taking two meters at a time sounds like a good start, just to blend it with the top landscaping.
Yeah, yeah, as an initial step anyway.
Yeah. Uh, last question was, uh, given the culvert work that is being proposed, uh, does that mean that, uh, at one time there was a, a talk of a potentially, uh, work, uh, with Elkhorn and changing it to a, a free-span bridge or, or something like that? So that would basically mean that that's really not feasible?
Uh, yeah, that, that's been put away basically for now. I, I think the long, really long-term plan would be when Elkhorn would need to be replaced, uh, at the end of its life cycle would be to probably switch to a, uh, clear-span bridge. But at this point, uh, the cost is quite high.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Stanford.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Comer, for your presentation. I had a question for you about the budget. On page two of six in the presentation on the long-term mitigation, um, it says until full project funding is secured, council authorized spending of up to, but not to exceed three million dollars. And then when we go down into the chart, it has council as the contribution of four million dollars. So I'm not sure how that aligns with what I thought we had approved. I know that we had approved the project, but the approved budget, is that, is there going to be an additional budget ask or? Because, so, so in there, we've got four million dollars is the Town of Canmore's contribution.
Counselor Sanford, uh, the original approval was for thirty-eight million, uh, one hundred and fifty thousand, I believe. Of that total approval, four million was to be funded by Town of Canmore. And separate to that, um, of the total budget, three million dollars worth of spend was authorized. So spend up to three million of the total thirty-eight million dollar budget, which is funded in accordance with the initial authorization column. So that's the first three million in funding authorization.
So once the whole project is built at thirty-seven million, it's expected Town of Canmore would have put four million in?
So overall?
Overall.
Okay. Um, and then the total authorization of six million, nine hundred dollars, nine hundred thousand, what is that? The six million, nine hundred thousand, what's changing then?
So basically the six point nine, that's the, um, the work we need to do, well, we would, that we would like, we'd like to do at the culverts, the three point three million. And also the hundred fifty thousand dollars for the passive mitigation and the extra four hundred fifty thousand and the extra four hundred fifty thousand for the design and the EIA portion.
Okay, so that's an interim funding type of?
Correct.
Draw on that total?
Correct. So that would be an increase of three point nine million.
Okay.
Over the three.
Which will come to council at a future business meeting.
Correct.
So this is just a proposal?
Yes.
We're not approving anything today?
No, no.
Oh. Um, I had a question for you about the, um, the passive mitigation you referred to with the, the camera, uh, the remote video and weather monitoring. Is, so is the monitoring that you're proposing strictly video cameras or snowpack analysis or?
So two different things. One of, one of it is, uh, the, the weather, uh, stations. So the weather station, that's, um, again, one in, up in Cougar Creek catchment. And we're proposing one also either on civic center or on the fire hall, uh, most likely here on the civic center. And those ones would be also live. Um, we basically, we can basically pull data whenever we want, uh, and would most likely also be on a website, so anybody could probably go take a look if they want. The live monitoring, um, those are mostly video cameras, but the system, the backbone that we're looking at getting could also be used for any kind of data. And that's the portion of the, that, uh, fire and, uh, fire rescue and also IT, uh, is looking into right now in terms of, um, it, it is basically some kind of a wireless system that can talk to each other and, and you can put any kind of data through that if you want. So for this, for our, our work, we want to use it mostly for live, uh, video. Could be at Cougar Creek, at the debris net, could be at, uh, the, uh, the bridge on the Bo River during an event on the Bo River, um, things like that. But also the nodes, the backbone of the system could also be used for any, any kind of data that we want to transmit over that system.
And, and what parameters would you be measuring with weather monitoring?
So we're mostly interested for two different things. One is, for example, in the Cougar Creek catchment, one thing that's quite important is the, the snow depth. And right now, it's, it's hard for us to actually go up in the Alpine and, and take a look at that. So we would measure the snow depth up there, but also, uh, temperature and, and rainfall. So we're not trying to do forecasting with this. We're trying to get some real data, real, real time. So if we have a forecast of a big event coming in, um, we want to know what's happening in Cougar Creek. So now if it's raining and we know that we're getting rain and we're getting five mils and then ten and fifteen and twenty, then we'll be able to feed that back into, um, what we'll, we'll believe will happen at Cougar Creek and inform us in how much water is actually going to potentially come through.
And so who on staff would be interpreting the data?
So, again, the, for the weather forecasting, we're not doing that, that's not the purpose. We've been working with, uh, John Palmeroy on the, the snow part, um, and the, the weather, the actual, um, weather stations. And in terms of how much water is coming, it's already been done through all their analysis, the hazard and risk analysis. We, we know if we get that much water, what it means in Cam, or like in, at the, the, the structure basically with the debris net at this point. So there's not really a lot of, um, analysis that we need to do. It's more real life what we're getting. We're not planning on using it as a big forecasting tool and we could send us back to anybody who would like to use the data after, or if we need to do a forensic analysis after, but, yeah. It's to inform on, on, on the spot basically what's going on.
Okay. Can I ask one more question?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you, you just mentioned Dr. Palmeroy. And you mentioned that there were some third-party reviewers and expert advisors on the debris structure. So who were, who were your experts and third-party reviewers?
So for the, uh, the design of structure, we had Norbert Marganston. Um, we're still involved as a reviewer. Um, and also we've engaged Thirber Engineering. Um, they have lots of experience in, in, uh, I wouldn't say similar structure, but they've, they're, they do a lot of work in, uh, dam safety, tailing dams. And John Sub, John Subkowicz at Thirber is a, a well-known expert in, in the matter. And those guys were reviewing the, um, yeah, basically all the geotechnical, all the structure itself. And we've also engaged Northwest Hydraulics as a third-party reviewer for the hydraulics.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Counselor Comfort.
Just for my own curiosity, that live monitoring, would that also include, uh, the drones that I believe make up part of, uh, the fire department's equipment?
Uh, we haven't discussed that. We have, I haven't, well, we've discussed a little bit, the, my understanding of the drone, like, we haven't talked too much about that, so it's not really part of our project. My understanding too is that when it, it's a big rain event with wind and stuff like that, it's probably not the.
I was thinking for things like snowpack or just to have, go up and have a look to avoid having to take this pretty hefty hike time-wise of personnel, so to kind of?
Yeah, I believe you have to be in sight of the, the drone to actually be able to control it.
Oh, okay.
So we couldn't fly up, um, far up in the catchment without having?
That sight line?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There's no other questions, counsel, this time? Thank you very much for the presentation. We're running behind quite a bit. I'm going to call a very short break now, five minutes, say, and get back into the agenda. Can hear you?
Five minutes on Three Sisters.
Five minutes?
On Three Sisters.
Oh, yeah. Perfect. Perfect. Let's get started again. So the final mitigation report, Three Sisters Creek.
Okay, I'll make this one quick. So Three Sisters Creek, we would like also to do some work this year. Basically, what we want to do is the reminder of the short-term mitigation to be finalized this year and also do the lower portions of the long-term mitigation this year, too. Basically, what we're talking about is, that's what's been shown already. So we're looking at this portion right there, the lower portion. So basically, from the pedestrian bridge all the way down to the parkway. And what we want to do is three different things. The channel rehabilitation from, again, the pedestrian bridge down to also the building protection there. It's a small berm or a small wall that needs to be built there to increase the protection of the condo buildings. And also, what we call the parkway overflow protection. The channel rehab itself would be mostly bioengineering and stone pitching. Stone pitching is similar to photo on the bottom right. And it's the stones embedded. I'm not sure if this one there would be embedded in concrete or not. There's two different ways to do it. You can embed in concrete or just embed in the soil and then plant some vegetation around it to actually sort of solidify it. And also, the bioengineering where you don't get stone pitching. Typically, that project would most likely be willow staking. You take some willow branches. You plant them in the soil. And when it grows, the roots actually hold down the soil in place, so it increases the stability of the banks and the soil around it. So it's a technique that's been used all over the place in Calgary lately and also in Banff. It's been done on a few different projects. The overflow protection, we're looking at this work would be in conjunction with also Alberta Transportation. They've committed some funds for this project, too. And we would be using some of the concrete mats that we still have in stock, basically. We have a few left of those. So they would be used for the protection there. And that's basically if the culvert is exceeding its capacity in terms of water conveyance, the water would start flowing in the ditch towards, in this photo, like, left and up. And then it would actually start overflowing the parkway. And it's to prevent the downstream section of the highway, of the parkway, to actually erode and start losing the asphalt and the shoulder, that area. So that would help protect that and increase its resilience in case of the flood, so we can actually keep using the parkway during an event. So for this one, what we have in terms of funding sources, we still have some FREC, $90,000 left. We still have about $100,000 of DRP. And Alberta Transportation committed about, not about, but committed $520,000 for this. And basically, the town of Camor is no contribution necessary for this project. So all money is already approved or coming from AT. And what we need to do for this is submit our water accumulation. We currently have one for the short-term mitigation that we need to amend or submit a new one. We're in discussion with the province on this right now. And construction completion would be fall of 2016.
Great. So just to make it clear or to be certain, the deflection berm that's upstream of the work you're talking about would take place in a different year?
Correct.
2017 or something?
Yeah. And that's the portion of work that we would need ACRP funding for.
Great. Are there any other questions, Counselor Comfort? Any other questions then at this time? Seeing none. Thanks for all your presentations. A lot of work. There's a verbal update on the...
John, if I can.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Sartain. Closing remark.
Julia's going to be back here next week, but I won't. So I just wanted to acknowledge her time here. It's been two years since she came over from Austria, from the Boku. That was the length of her visa. So now she's, we tried hard to convince her to stick around, but she's heading back. So I just want to thank her for her contribution, her connections with Boku, her experience, her knowledge, really contributed to everything we've done. And she's leaving us in a much better place. So thank you.
Well, I'm disappointed to hear that. I thought you were here for life. Darn. So back to Austria or...
I am with you.
Yes, eventually.
Well, thanks for all you've done. Thank you. One. Mr. Robertson?
Your worship, members of council. Thanks for having me this afternoon. I'm here to talk to you about the Livable Camor. Everyone Needs a Home Engagement Project that has just started this week. So just as a reminder, you said as a council for the next three years in your strategic plan that affordability is a primary goal and housing is one of the primary issues that affect affordability. So to go with that, we wanted to develop a strategy to hold meaningful and engaging conversations in the community around housing and what people want to see that's going to shape the future of housing for the community so that it's a place for everyone. So the purpose of the project is, number one, talk to the community about housing. Understand what the needs are. Listen to the community's goal and listen to what they're saying. Identify how housing is saying. Identify how housing impacts everyone through all stages of life. And just to create a meaningful dialogue so the community can also see what everyone else is saying in the town about housing, what they are looking for, where they're currently living, what they see as being gaps in the housing that we have here. We're working with the Whistler Center for Sustainability on the project. And they're a great company group to work with. Whistler is probably one of the leading towns in North America as far as what they've done to address the housing issues within the town site. So Whistler has approximately 1,900 units of affordable housing in the village. And the Whistler Center for Sustainability has been a key part of helping them develop the strategies that they have to deal with that. So the first step in the process was to identify some of the trends in Camor and some of the opportunities that may be here. So the Whistler Center for Sustainability has been in town. They conducted initial stakeholder interviews with a number of groups in town and also did background search on some of the underlying trends and issues that we're facing as a community on housing. So we do have a website launch for this now. It's camor.ca/livablecamor. And you can find these documents on the website, so I won't go into great detail about them. But I just thought some of the interesting highlights that they do talk about are the significant financial gaps in both the rental market and in the ownership market when you compare it to the average median wage in town. And that section is separated into adults, lone parents, and dual-parent, dual-child families, just for ease of use. And the other document up there is a housing profiles document. And what it talks about is six different possibilities of housing that may work in Camor. And it identifies some of the opportunities and benefits of each of them and just has a little discussion section on what it would mean for the town. Which moves us on to the engagement part. What are we asking people to do? Get involved with us. A conversation needs everyone in the community. So we're trying to, I think I heard this term, mobilize the middle. We want to hear from everyone in town. It's important that we hear from everyone in town. So the first thing that we have is the website, camor.ca/livablecamor. You can find out more information on the project there, including both those documents that were just up. It also has two case studies from other communities, so one being Whistler, one being Jackson Hole, Wyoming, and how they've addressed their housing issues in those communities. The first part of people talking to us and hearing from the community is an online survey, which is open right now. And it's open until the end of the month, April 30. And in over five days, we've had over 125 responses in five days right now. So it means people are passionate about it. They want to talk about this. And one of the interesting parts, I just looked at the stats for the survey. The biggest group of age respondents right now is between 25 and 44 years of age right now. So we're hearing from people that maybe we don't necessarily hear from all the time. And it's a positive. Second piece to the engagement is idea walls. This is what they look like. There's also one hanging right outside the foldable wall of council chambers here. What they're about is that, it's not quite completed in the picture here, but there are stickers in the bottom left-hand corner. And there's some pens, so people can answer the two questions at the bottom. And what we want people to do is just take stickers and answer the questions there. So where are you currently living? Where have you lived before? What type of housing might you need in the future? And it's a visual way for everyone in the community to see what other people are saying. So I think it's a really interesting concept. So they're around town in seven places. So one's here, one's at Elevation Place, the Rec Center, Bow Valley Parent Lake and the Senior Center, the Roundhouse Daycare, the high school, and St. Michael's Church. And as of the one at Elevation Place going up yesterday, the comment section is full on a test of today. So again, people are engaged.
So do you periodically remove comments? I mean, note them down somewhere and clear the board?
So we're going to have to, especially on the busy ones. So the one at Elevation Place will take pictures of it as it gets full and make sure we save those and then wipe the board down so people can continue to comment. But we will keep them all undocumented. The next part of the engagement is, we're calling Neighborhood Conversations or Block Parties. And what these are is, we're hoping that they'll be fun block party conversations, encouraging people to come out with their friends, neighbors, family, and just talk about housing. Engage in some fun learning activities and there'll be some games for kids, things like that going on. There'll be some presentations and boards around where people can learn and also give their different input on housing in the community. So there's two of them happening. First one is Friday, April 22, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Arts Place. And the second one is Saturday, April 23, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at Elizabeth Rumel School. So we intentionally tried to have one on kind of each side of the valley, so you can pick one that works best for you. And the next thing that's happening are open houses and a world cafe. So they're more focused on solutions. So it's not just exploring what we need and talking to people. It's a bit of that, but focusing on solutions and diving deeper into different types of housing in the community. So participants will have a chance to be involved together, discuss with each other around different solutions that may or may not work in the community. And it's a chance for the consultant and for us to listen to what people are saying and just have a bit of a deeper conversation about it. So again, there's two dates for these. May 11 at the Civic Center here, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. And May 14 here at the Civic Center from 12 to 2 p.m. And then I think one of the most interesting ones actually is the idea of hosting a pizza party. So you don't have to go to an event somewhere. You can have the event right at your house. So what these are is, we're asking people to get some friends together, order pizza, and talk about housing. So there'll be a housing workbook that you can download from the website, camor.ca/livablecamor. We'll email it to you. You get some friends together, have dinner, work through the workbook and answer the questions. And then when you submit the workbook back to us, you can get reimbursed for up to $35 for the pizza dinner. So we actually think that this is going to be a fun way for people to get together and talk about this. And we really hope that people around town take this up. And that's a bit of a summary on what we're doing for the engagement project. It's been a positive start, but we do need your help and everyone in the community to get this important issue out there and help us have a great conversation in the community. And that's it, if there's any questions.
That sounds great. So what happens, what's the process after all of these various opportunities have been completed?
So we'll compile the results that we get from the different engagement sessions and try to format it into sections and general comments about what we're hearing. And we'll definitely have the results available on our website after.
How long or when do you think that might have happened by?
That's a good question. I'd have to chat with the guys from the Whistler Center for Sustainability, but we could aim within a month, I would say.
Yeah, I can help with that. So the plan is to have the report presented to council before your summer recess.
Okay. By the end of July or end of June?
End of June, yeah.
Okay. Are there questions at this time then for Mr. Robertson? Seeing none. Thanks for that presentation. Looking forward to hearing all about it. And now item D4, Lot 1, Block 7, 990 Wilson Way.
Good afternoon, Mayor Borman, members of council. So I am here today to talk about Lot 1, Block 7, 67, which is the address of 990 Wilson Way. Way. First, a bit of background on this property. So when the Peaks of Grassy subdivision was approved in 1996 and registered in 1997, the parcel that I'm referring to was intended to be created as municipal reserve and was indicated as such on the application and the approved plan to the town. However, when the subdivision was registered by the developer with land titles, as it was endorsed by the town, it was erroneously shown as a regular parcel with a residential zoning consistent with other residential parcels in the Peaks of Grassy. Due to this error, titled lot remained with the developer, and property taxes were assessed and paid on the parcel, even though the site was landscaped as if it was municipal reserve and the town was maintaining the site. In 2007, the error on the parcel was brought to the attention of council, and the developer offered to transfer title of the parcel to the town for $1. On October 2nd, 2007, council approved a motion directing administration to transfer the parcel. In 2007, council approved a motion directing administration to transfer developer to the Unfortunately, due to resource constraints and other priorities at the time, the administration of the day did not move to effect that transfer. In the fall of 2008, the Three Sisters Development went into receivership, effectively sterilizing the town's ability to effect the transfer of the parcel at that time. In September of 2013, the Three Sisters Development was purchased out of receivership by Three Sisters Mountain Resorts Properties Limited through a court approval and vesting order. The order were provisions that essentially discharged. There's a paragraph in your report that I will not read verbatim. Essentially what it means is that new owner owned all lands free and clear of any caveats, restrictions, claims, et cetera. In January of 2014, the new owner, TSMVPL, transferred title of the parcel to an individual for valuable consideration. In late 2015, neighboring property owners who understood the parcel to be MR raised concerns with the town over the potential development of the parcel into residential housing. So that is the background as to how we got to where we are today. Raised by the neighbor, the town administration has gone back and has attempted to undertake both a historical and legal review to determine what, if any, may be the town's options as it relates to this parcel. The first thing I want to do is acknowledge that it is clear from the history that there were errors and missed opportunities on the part of the town administration, and we must take responsibility for that. The failure to recognize and rectify the error at registration in 1997 and the delay in enacting the council motion in 2007 both resulted in the circumstances that we are in today. In search of remedy, the town explored negotiation with the current landowner. In regards to the, we went out to external counsel for legal review, and they have determined that the court of approval and vesting order that came out of the receivership discharged the current ownership group of any historical obligations in relation to this parcel. The current owners, or the TSMVPL, held title of the land free and clear of any claims by the town coming out of receivership and were within their rights to transfer title to the parcel for valuable consideration. Unfortunately, what this means is the town has no legal cause of action that could result in the recovery of the parcel or compensation for the loss of the intended MR from TSMVPL. In addition to the legal review, we engaged the current owner and the TSMVPL in a negotiated discussion. The current landowner considers the parcel to be fully developable, which is consistent with the current land use zoning and urban planning practices. As such, the current owner is not prepared to transfer the title for considerably less than the approximate market value for comparable developable lot in the area. Although the town recognizes the historical intent of the parcel was MR and acknowledges that mistakes were made, and while we empathize with the adjacent property owners and their frustration, at this point, administration has not come forward with a recommendation on how to proceed on this lot, given the history. We would further note that Alberta Planning Law is clear that MR as a land use designation is not immutable, and there vests no right in adjacent property owners to its perpetual enjoyment. Changes in land use remain at the discretion of council. The financial impacts of this are that the town has lost the MR allocation of the parcel and its corresponding value at this time. That is the extent of the presentation and a summary of what was in the report. I expect that there are many questions, and so I am available to answer those.
I just have sort of a high-level, general question about remaining lands owned by TSMVPL. So there are a number of other parcels of lands that, to my knowledge, haven't yet been transferred to the town, particularly lands where there's trails and other recreational facilities. So does this absolute discharge by the courts when the land came out of receivership also absolve the current owners of any obligation on the rest of those lands?
The lands you're referring to would be the remaining municipal reserve balance or allocation. That is a more complicated question to answer. There is both legal obligation and then the fact that there is, we have not finalized the Smith Creek ASP. So there are a number of conversations that will be ongoing with them in relation to how to dedicate or not that MR and what amount is to receive credit or not. So the short answer is, is that the process going forward will have to be one of discussion and negotiation. An exact legal test of your question would be one that we would only be able to explore if those discussions were to be unsuccessful.
So along the same line of question, when the lands were in receivership and then when they came out of receivership, there was a long list of deficiencies that we had understood, well, clearly we were made to understand by the receivers that they weren't going to undertake addressing the list of deficiencies, but the town was of the understanding that the new landowners would, and is that in doubt now?
It's a question that is up for discussion through the collaborative process that we are currently undertaking. So the extent to which we would be able to hold them accountable to that, to those agreements, and maybe Mr. Fish has some additional thoughts on this, if it were to come to a litigation scenario, we have not tested. Our expectation is that this is something that we will be able to work out through discussion with them as we deal with all of the remaining parcels of land.
I won't add too much, but I suspect that you're talking about primarily outstanding, largely subdivision obligations in the Stewart Creek Phase 1 and 2 area, and those lands we are working with the developer on having the key issues resolved. And that's all, it's a full range of issues from some infrastructure to some landscaping, some MR completion, things like that. So we're working well with the new owners to address those issues.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crawford.
Your worship, and thank you, Mr. Fark, for the presentation. Has the option of expropriation been investigated? And if so, can you tell me what your thoughts are?
Sure. We have looked at the possibility of expropriation. It is an avenue that is available to council. We would have to follow the process as set out in the Expropriations Act, which I happen to have a copy of in front of me here. That is certainly an option that can be pursued. The process would require, all costs would be on the appropriating authority, so the cost to go through the process, to have an assessment or a value placed on the land determined by the board, any appraisal costs would fall to the appropriating authority. And the appropriating authority then would make a decision, or sorry, the board from the Appropriations Act would then make a decision as to the value of the lot and require the municipality to pay that. So it is a process that we could go through. It would still require that we provide compensation for the lot, so it's not an avenue to recover the lot without providing compensation.
Absolutely, and my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we actually don't need to go to the board for value if the amount that we provide is accepted by the owner?
That is correct. So it's only if there's a dispute between the owner and the appropriating authority that it would go to the board, but that would essentially, we could accomplish the same thing through a negotiation as we could through an expropriation, because if the landowner is amenable to an offer to purchase, then it wouldn't require the expropriation process.
What about, this land was purchased for $50,000. I saw that on a land transfer, and so that's public record. The fact that it was $50,000 and presumably the landowner believes it's below market value based on the conversations you've had, and intuitively it seems low, does the fact that the land was sold for $50,000 below market value after the receivership, does that bring into any of the arguments that we, does that bring into any of the arguments that we're acting upon knowledge that they had before and that brought an element of risk to the transaction?
So the receivership and the current owner's purchase of the lot as a bona fide purchaser defeats any sort of historical claim. Whether or not they were aware that there may have been complications or concerns from the municipality does not provide us a recourse in law to pursue it. However, the purchase price for the lot is something that if we went down the expropriation route, we could raise before the board if there was a dispute on the amount, and that is something that the board could consider as to whether, what they deem to be appropriate compensation for the expropriation. So it is something that could be considered. Whether it would be determinative, we would have to, it would be unclear.
Right, because it's either a bona fide purchase in which that has to have some relevance on what the market value is, or it's not a bona fide purchase in which case we might have some arguments and equity come up.
Yeah, we may have, yes. Yes, is the short answer.
When could this come back to council? If I was to request to come to a regular meeting, because I'd like to be making a motion on that, what sort of timing are we looking at? Can it come back for next week?
Ms. Soto.
So as a, if it was essentially to bring back this existing staff report, yes, it could be brought back next week and council could consider giving direction if further research or investigation or discussion is needed prior to that, then that would delay any further.
And if I might have one more question. I understand that a development permit application has been submitted on the land. My concern is that before this matter is dealt with by council, I wouldn't want any changes to the land, if possible. What sort of timelines are we looking at? There must be some sort of appeal period that prevents any action on the land until sometime down the road?
The short answer to that is no. So there is a development permit application that is in. We have, as a municipality, as governed by the MGA, we have 40 days in which to provide a decision. Otherwise, the applicant is entitled to deem it rejected and appeal immediately to the SDAB. It would usually take between 21 and 30 days. For us, we have a maximum of 30 days, but it takes usually two to three to four weeks to be in SDAB hearing on that. However, that does not preclude or prevent, so under the existing land use, the owner could clear up to 500 square meters of trees, for example, without taking, without having to apply for an initial permit or building permit or such. So the, we don't have any tool at our disposal to prevent the landowner from taking certain steps that he's entitled to do under the existing land use.
Has the development permit been approved yet?
It has not. The white notice was posted, I believe, about 10 days ago now, so we are, we should be receiving and reviewing the feedback and moving forward. I would note that the development permit application was consistent with the land use requested. Therefore, the municipality would have a hard time finding a reason to deny the development permit.
I'm just wondering about timing and what status would be as of next Tuesday, so.
What was the date on the application permit, or application?
Yeah, around March 21st is what we believe, yeah.
So the 40 days would take us through to...
End of the month.
At least the end of April.
Yes.
All right. Those are all my questions. I did note that I'd like to have this matter come back. I have a couple of other questions that might affect discussions with the landowner, and they might be more, better dealt with in camera.
Okay, well, we can move in camera once we've dealt with some of the other questions then. And the CEO, you had a point?
Yes, I just wanted to remind council that as a committee of the whole, you could vote to direct administration to bring this item back to a future council meeting, and that would be our preference, so we get clear direction and understand the full wishes of council.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Russell.
Thank you. Mr. Fark, just, I was listening to what you're saying, that we've got no mechanism. If we were to commence an expropriation proceeding, would that not stop this development in its tracks?
That's an interesting question, Mr. Counselor Russell. I don't know the answer to that. The advice from our lawyer is that, I'm looking for it here, a private agreement with the landowner may be the only way to assure that the status quo is preserved.
But perhaps if that question wasn't asked, it might be...
Yeah, yeah. So we could, we could look into that further.
Thank you.
Counselor Comfert.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Fark. My concern here, well, more than one, but what mechanism or safeguard do we have in place currently to make sure there aren't other things like this lurking in the weeds? I think Counselor Crawford, or is your question, Mayor Borman, about how are the other agreements affected by the bankruptcy and the vacation of the vacated status of the lands, free and clear? Have we done any kind of, I guess it would be almost a forensic exercise to determine what else might be out there? And in the future, going forward, that there are resolutions of council or motions of council that were never acted on?
Right. So this was a very specific scenario where an error was made upon registration at land titles quite a significant number of years ago. The, it is certainly an unfortunate series of events. We don't have any indication that there was a systemic problem of these types of errors occurring. In my knowledge, and I believe to the knowledge of some of the other administration who've been here for a very long time, nothing like this has occurred before. So as you suggest, to undergo a force of all council motions to determine what could be done would be an extremely time-intensive exercise, and we, you know, we don't have any indication that this is an endemic or systemic problem. In regards to the other part of your question around the remaining lands, as Mr. Fish has indicated, we remain in discussion with them to resolve a number of outstanding issues as well as the discussion around the remaining lands. Until such time as, or I guess the approach is that we are working collaboratively to address those concerns, and rather than going down a litigation route of trying to test what obligations they may or may not continue to have, because that would be a, again, a very time-consuming and costly process.
So if there's no other questions right at this time, then Ms. Soto.
Sorry, just further to Mr. Fark's comments, just to assure council...
Just to assure council with respect to the undertaking and actioning of council motions, it's been for some time now, actually, predecessor Don Koch and started the practice of the council resolution tracking. And so that has started to occur around 2008. So every motion is tracked and actioned and reported back to council through the committee of the whole meetings.
So, one more question? Counselor Kraus?
Actually, first of all, thanks for that comment, Ms. Soto. I was thinking just earlier that if this was a council motion now, we wouldn't, you know, within months, we'd be? But I have a question with regards to your comment on a motion of committee of the whole to bring this back onto the agenda for council. How specific does that motion have to be as far as the motion that I'd be bringing? Do I have to state that now, or just generally indicate coming back?
I think it could be general, just that the decision would be brought back since possible.
So do you have, does anybody have questions that we may prefer to go in camera to discuss, or not? Yes, in which case I'll move, move in camera this time. Was in favor, opposed, motions carried unanimously?
Anybody coming in?
I believe they might leave their way back in, but I don't see it as an issue. Wait, I said they would be... Yeah. It's Amanda and Juan.
Oh. Okay, so we're back in session or back in... We're out of in-camera now. And we're still on item D4. Counselor Crosser.
With your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the committee of whole... The whole directs this matter to be placed on the agenda for the council meeting of April 19th, 2016.
With a recommendation from Admin?
If Admin likes to... Would like to make a recommendation, they certainly may do so.
Discussion on...
Speaking to the motion, I believe that this matter ultimately revolves as the report indicates around previous decisions of council that have not been implemented or carried out. And any dealing with this matter should ultimately be a decision of council.
I can support that motion. Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call the question those in favor. Opposed, motion is carried unanimously. I'm going to suggest that the remainder of the agenda... I'm going to suggest that the remainder of the agenda... If anybody has any questions arising from items E, F, G, or H, they could be directed by email or some other means for an answer. And with that, I will move... Behold be adjourned. Those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried unanimously.